With the communications from the regionals, would you like to wait until we have our business meeting or would you like to talk now?
We'll be roll call.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. All right. First meeting, sorry. Director, will you take a roll?
Commissioner Ham.
Here.
Commissioner Boatright.
Here.
Commissioner Cobb. Commissioner Green.
Here.
Commissioner Hinkin.
Here.
Commissioner Moore.
Here.
Commissioner Scott.
Here.
Commissioner Solomon.
Here.
Commissioner Windrow. There you have a court.
Thank you. So we'll get started. Regionals, would you like to wait until the business meeting to provide your reports? Since we do have a long meeting to go through on the work session. Okay. And Chief Sparks, same thing?
Yeah.
Okay. And want to go into Legal?
Legal does have a complaint to present to the commission. It might be best to go ahead and have you guys hash some of that out in the work session.
Okay.
We had a report concerning a possible certification fraud. When undergoing an audit, a specific department determined that they were unable to locate a firefighter two certification for a specific individual. This individual had previously had administrator access to a C A D S through his department. This individual had achieved a firefighter two certification in 2014. In 2017, that individual's firefighter two certification was revoked because the I F S A C number on the certification did not belong to that individual, but to another person. The fraudulently acquired fire instructor certification that he had obtained through the progression rules was never revoked, so he still had it even though the firefighter two was revoked. A C A D S reflects that there was an H M O certificate from 2004 with a certification number belonging to a different person who worked at the same department. And that the individual, that is the subject of this complaint, did go back and get an H M A and H M O certification in 2019. So that's kind of a moot point, but just another fraudulent certificate that we believe occurred. A C A D S records indicate that that individual may have submitted false firefighter two certification to the firefighting commission office. And the original submission was accepted, though it was identified by the office in 2017 and revoked. The original number would have been issued less than 30 days from the original firefighter one certification, which under the rules at that time would not have been possible. We do believe his firefighter one certification was appropriately attained. The fire instructor was still left in place, and this should not have been allowed to happen as F F two is a prerequisite to fire instructor one. While being terminated from his department, the chief found the individual's possessions to also include false certificates for fire officer one and fire officer two. Those have never been entered into the case. He admitted to the fire chief that he was not certified to fire officer one or two. In conclusion, we believe that this individual has created false certificates for at least four disciplines within the fire service. We were, he submitted two false certificates to the commission for the purpose of gaining employment. And the department also believes this individual provided false prerequisites to gain the fire instructor certification. We have copies of all of these documents that were obtained during the investigation. And it's up to the commission now to decide what, how to move forward. Legal recommendations for moving forward would be one of two paths. Either contacting this individual and having them agree to decertifying the fire instructor certification and barring him from participating in firefighting commission programs, including testing and educational incentive pay for 10 years, or having a formal hearing with same or similar goals by the commission. He does have a live burn that was acquired in 2023. So that's where that 10 years came from, is that it would expire under the new rule before he'd be able to come back into the fire service.
I was going to ask you where the 10 year was coming from, but thank you for explaining that out. So we have a history of fraud.
That fact, yeah.
That has taken place here.
Yeah.
What is the will of the commission?
Ma'am, what are, what is, what does he, what does this individual, she obtain properly? As certifications right now, what do they hold?
Right now, as far as we can tell, he properly has H M A, H M O, and live burn. He also has an old, but properly certified firefighting one certification. But those are the only
Pre-I F S A C or?
Obtained. Those all have I F S A C numbers.
Okay. And they're all correct?
Yeah. So anything over and above that would be improper. Which is currently just the fire instructor one.
I believe this individual should start back at zero and have nothing. He should start at H M A and work his way all the way back up and have the 10 year suspended. He can't get any incentive pay. That, that gives him like, it's like he's a brand new farmer. He's lied four different occasions.
Right.
Four different times.
Well, we have, we have two options on the table that Legal is presenting at this time. First, let's contact them.
Okay.
And let's decertify him to his I F S A C numbers. His true I F S A C numbers, which is firefighter one, has the, has the highest level. And then do a ban of 10 years. Or invite him to come and sit in front of us and defend it.
Yeah, I think you should do that.
So the question for me, if we do a hearing and he comes here, can we invoke works? Yeah, I suppose.
The whole book opens at that point.
Yeah, anything that's eligible for you guys to do under the rules would be.
He needs to come in for the commission.
That's what I would say. I want him here.
Yep.
If he'll come.
Yeah.
And if he doesn't, what can we do?
We can have a, if we get service, we can do a default hearing where I would present the proof and then you guys could make a decision of whether to grant a default judgment against him.
Yes, ma'am. I think that's the route I'd like to vote on.
If you've gone this long, you've cheated on that many things. People don't have the information now. That's what I need to say, however.
All right. So we'll vote on that in the regular meeting. But basically, at this point, what Legal will do is just drop that numerous of hearing charges and attempt to get service and update with the A L J. You guys, at your October meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Mary Beth.
Thank you. Mr. Bell, would you like to present now or wait until the business meeting?
Wait.
Okay. Director?
The thing I have in my director report, he can wait till the actual business meeting.
Excellent. Do we have any old business? Hearing none moving forward? New business? You should have received an email with the East Tennessee audits. Have you guys completed all of your audits?
Yes, sir.
Okay. They're available at email right now for review. And as we spoke prior, we had no issues on any of the departments?
No issues.
Okay. Move into the E I P V E I P subcommittee report. Would one of you two like to go into it?
It doesn't matter. It will go. So we, we had a meeting yesterday here in Cookville. Meeting didn't last very long. Well, they had one person online and one person here in person. So that meeting lasted about a total of 10 minutes. But once we completed that meeting, now we've been to all three grand divisions. And we've spoke with our constituents as far as what the problems are with the V E I P and suggestions on ways to fix it. So we'll, we'll get ready to close out that committee in the main business meeting. And then we'll get ready to move the hearing to try to slimline those rules and try to make it easier for the volunteers to be able to attain and be able to increase those numbers for us as a whole. So, yeah, anything else there?
No, that pretty much covers it.
Yeah.
Did you want to add anything? Okay. Move into the rules subcommittee report. I think this would be a good time.
I have the rules ready. I can screenshot them to the, the public meeting or I don't know. We can get them on the screen.
Chief Nash, is there a possibility of utilizing these TVs?
I have an H D M I hole.
Because if not, I have a bunch of dongles that would fit C and everything else. I'm prepared. So as we're getting ready to set up, the rules subcommittee has met numerous times over the past few months. And with that, there's a lot of changes that are in the pipeline, a lot of radical changes that you're going to see with what we're about to put on screen. Our main focus was to take care of chapter seven, which covers the education incentive. We understand that there are a lot of issues, especially for our stakeholders in the volunteer departments. And we needed to address them immediately. While we were in there, we also had to open up chapter six, which is our standards that we adopt. Because we're, as we know, N F P A doing the consolidation to 1010. We needed to start addressing a lot of those standards within the rules and updating them. And then because of changes we made between chapters six and seven, we also had to open up chapters two and three to just do a little bit of house cleaning. Because we didn't want contradiction to take place between the different chapters. As we're getting ready to put changes. Mary Beth, you want to start with chapter two and then we'll just work all the way through?
Chapter three.
Chapter three, yes?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So in chapter three, basically, we just moved the N F P A standards to this standard language performance of the N F P A standards with a directory language to chapter six. We did that effectively throughout. I'll scroll through and then if there's anything else besides N F P A changes, I will let you guys know. And stop me if somebody has a question.
And the reason for chapter three, it was, a lot of it was oversight when we did the last rule hearing. Where we were going to a standard verbiage of referencing chapter six, where the standards are actually located. We wanted to take the N F P A standard numbers out of all the other chapters. So when we had to do future rule hearing for the update of the standards, we were only touching one chapter instead of having to go back and, and open up multiple books, multiple chapters in a rule hearing. So as we were going through this last time, there was just some oversights where there was standard numbers left in this chapter. And that's what this was addressing.
So the only thing that we did here that was different was that we changed the word rope technician to rope operations. So we believe that was just a typo in the original rule, under rope technician. There was a spacing error here that we fixed. We tried to keep these very standard so that it would move quickly to the same directory language all throughout. Here, we took out three different N F P As and just directed everything to chapter six. And that's the end of the chapter three edit. Any questions about those?
Hearing none moving forward?
Okay, in chapter four. Hold on, Josh, let me figure out how to share it to your screen. I think the website can see it now as well. Not going to extend too much of them. Okay, in chapter four, we added the addition of the language practicals and projects. Our new accreditation manager made this recommendation so that we can maintain compliance with I F S A C and pro board. Some of the things that we've called practicals historically are moving towards the, the take home project route. And so just out of an abundance of caution, we've made that a project slash practical in most of the disciplines. Obviously, like live burn, you can't take that home with you, but we just added a budget precaution, added that everywhere we could. Still referring N F P A standards back. So this was one that we discussed in the most recent rules subcommittee hearing. Director Zimmerman's office had discussed having some issues with the way prerequisites were turned in prior to testing in order to have rosters ready. So instead of at the time of the examination, we turned that into prior to the time of the examination. And then we took out that two week rule. Our intent with that is to use an internal policy to show the office how to administer and handle rosters. But it wouldn't and shouldn't have an effect on the fire service on the outside of, of the office day to day tasks. Certified or above. Okay, so this is being moved to test validation. This was under a part of the rules that was talking about the character of examinations, such as how tests should be created. But then there was a, a sentence in here that we feel was better suited for the test validation section. So that's just a moving those sentences. And then Heather, do you remember why we took off this paragraph here? The J P Rs? Or does anybody remember why we took that one off?
Red line examinations and projects, show me the graph.
That could have been an error and red line.
I don't know why we were thinking.
Greg, do you know? That last red line paragraph concerning J P Rs?
I think that should be right off.
I may have just inadvertently redlined that. Okay. I'll mark that one to correct before the main, the big meeting.
I have a question. Prior to that, the two week thing, so what's the, what's going to be the procedure? Like, we can't have people one day before a test just applying for it, right?
So we are looking at, as far as applying and being able to sign up for the test, we've kind of got a mixed audience. So right now with classes that are being taught at T F A C or even in-house at certain locations, we're not getting the roster until the Monday of the actual class and the test is being held on Friday. So we're not able to meet that depending upon, especially if it's their class associated. That particular rule does not allot for that situation. So my hopes are that we can clean this rule up, simplify it so that internal policy, we can write something on if a testing event is associated with a class, we can accept it in this amount of time. Or if it is an open testing event, then we can accept it in this amount of time. So we've got different situations that are going on across the state. And that rule cannot be applied evenly across the board and, and meet all the needs of our constituents.
But once your internal policy takes effect, that will be pushed out to everybody across the state so that they understand their timeframe?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Just adding the word project. Under firefighter one, there was a statement that it was like all of the following or one of the following options relating to the testing, but we just kind of simplified that language and made it more concise. And if anybody else has any thoughts on that.
And as we're in this chapter, we, we didn't want to do a rewrite of this chapter because once again, we wanted to keep the package small. And so this was just basically a cleanup that we did in, in chapter four, just to address some of those things that were just outlined. So when we actually reconvene the rules subcommittee to get ready after this piece, we'll start and actually do a full cleanup and rewrite of this chapter.
Same with firefighter two, just basically pointing back to chapter six and then making all of the requirements of the practical. Greg, you said that now with accreditation, they have to do all of the practical requirements or all of the, the tasks. They can't, it's not a, a random draw anymore. Is that accurate or is that just for live burn? I think, is that what you said?
Uh huh. Yeah.
So here we just took out a, an old date, 2016. More N F P As. Under the firefighting for airports, same thing, just they'll be compliant with all of the J P Rs. Thank you. That's the word I was reaching for. There was a rule under here for incident safety officer that the project would be evaluated by a committee of the commission. That's just not how we've done it in practice. And so we decided to take that out. Same with health safety officer. All right. Did you, Commissioner Scott, want to explain kind of how we got here with the fit testing conversation? Basically, I think we're just pointing back to the standard.
Yeah, that's, that's what it's, so anytime somebody does a live burn, it's required that they actually have a fit test within the previous 12 months. And so one of the things that we want to make consistent across the state with live burns is that when they're being conducted, that at a station is actually being done by the fire chief. That yes, this person has met the fit test requirements in the previous 12 months prior to participating in their live burn.
Fixed a typo on eyeglasses. We took out the firefighter three standards because firefighter two is what the certification should be at this point. We did that in two spots. This is just to fix the minimum of two weeks thing with the rosters. And that's the end of that.
Moving into the chapter six.
In chapter six, we brought all of the N F P A standards up to the current edition. We took out the progression rules. So now instead of the 30 day waiting period, the only waiting period that the commission is proposing would be a 36 month waiting period between achieving firefighter one and testing for fire instructor one. But there would not be a 30 day waiting period anywhere else in the rules.
I'll, I'll explain this a little bit. Currently, as rule reads, a firefighter is eligible to test for fire instructor one 36 months after entering the fire service. Well, because not everyone's C A D S accounts are kept up to date, it's a very hard number to actually track as far as when they enter the fire service. We needed to have a hard date. And so by utilizing the certificate for firefighter one, that gave us our hard date to go 36 months from. One of the things that we've heard consistently across the state is the A H J wants the authority on how their people are progressing. We are a certifying agency. We're not making firefighters. That's what the A H J is doing. That's your responsibility as the A H J is to make the firefighter. So we feel that in your S O Gs, in your career development plans, that lays out what your progression for your department is. And that shouldn't be something that we dictate. That'd be, that should be something that your department dictates on how you bring up your firefighters and how you make your firefighters. So by eliminating the 30 day window between tests and by just having that one cooldown period of that three years still in play. So my department's getting a call. So by having that cooldown period with the instructor, it's still there. So that way, hey, here's a pause. So somebody still can't run through all certifications, all the way through officer four. But once again, it's on the A H J. It's what your policy is on what you're allowing them to test at what time. So that's where we thought by taking that window out, giving you the authority as the jurisdiction, because that's what you've been wanting.
So for reciprocity, there was a break in service rule that the office basically has no way to verify that, that there hasn't been a break in service from 60 months from an outside agency from another state. So we just took that part out and again, push that back to the A H J. And if you guys need to verify, you know, the people you're hiring. Any thoughts on that, Commissioner Scott, or is that accurate?
That's accurate.
Same, just taking out that break in service rule. And then for progress and reciprocity purposes, we're going off of the I F S A C or pro board's field date as the date of certification. That's just to clarify that rule and make it less vague. And then we separated educational incentive pay as the date of certification as well. We took out this chap, this rule number seven. That's not really a thing that happens in the state. I don't, I don't think. I think that's how we ended up there. And that's the end of the proposal for chapter six.
All right. Hopefully you all are sitting down for chapter seven.
So, and this is almost finished. I think that we're still just cleaning up a couple of comments here and there. Our, our goal is to submit this for internal review by, by the end of today, depending on how the afternoon meeting goes or how the business meeting goes. So we're changing just some of the minimum standard language, just to make it things that we can actually verify. And this is for V E I P or E I P. For firefighter eligibility, we're taking out the approved by commission, the pre-approval program. And we'll talk more about that as we get further down in the rule. Basically, as far as in-service training, anywhere where the, the pre-approval happened, we've just deleted the approved by the commission portion. Entry level personnel, we're having the volunteer firefighters be compliant with the minimum standards in the Tennessee code.
Whereas currently, right now, it spells out in our rule, 16 hours, 64 and live burn. What we want to do was clean that up to where you're, the, the volunteer firefighter or the firefighter is meeting the minimum basic training requirements per T C A.
So they would be compliant with that within 36 months of service? Or they could show proof of certification for firefighter one or higher? And those would both qualify a volunteer for the in-service. For career, we have basically no changes, just renumbering. And if there's specific concerns there, we can always discuss it at the rulemaking hearing. But career firefighters have not, not historically been the ones that are, were having problems with the educational incentive pay portion. Um, but career firefighters have not, not historically been the ones that are, were having problems with the educational incentive pay uh, portion. Um, we just combined a couple period of paragraphs here for fire life safety. Um, this should say, okay, fire and life safety educators, fire inspectors and fire investigators are all eligible. Uh, we just combined two paragraphs for the sake of cleaning it up. Um, the day the individual became employed as a firefighter is the date of participation and educational incentive pay for the three-year um, requirement for in-service training. This is where um, some of the bigger changes happen. The forty hours is still the same for career, thirty still for volunteer. Uh, what we did was take out um, instructor-led programs shall not be scheduled for less than two hours. All my uh, courses shall not be scheduled or shall be a minimum of one hour. Letting you guys uh, take that back to the, the in-service training and, and handle that and just present it on March first for who's eligible. Um, appointment of a training coordinator, we took out the um, r- regulation as far as um, who is teaching those classes or who's being the training coordinator. Um, a couple lines there. Um, instructors at com- commission-sponsored events um, should either be subject matter es- experts or have that specialized training. Course curriculum, the commission encourages course instructors to be um, firefighter one or uh, subject matter expert, fire instructor one or subject matter es- experts, but we're taking out a lot of these requirements that we initially had for submitting those preapproval programs and who should be teaching them. Uh, the range of dates and locations, the subject matter, basically we just want you to turn everything in on March first or before. Uh, the requirement for the minimum training, this is all statutory. So initially in educational incentive pay, you had to be compliant with the Dustin Samples Act and the Vanessa K free and all that. You still have to do that under the law, but we're not using it as a hinge on the educational incentive pay. It's just duplicate regulations we're, we're taking out. We're just expanding the opportunity for computerized training. Requiring a training coordinator to be available um, during business hours to answer questions, that, that's up to the AHJ. We've taken that out. Um, the audit procedures is, is something that if we're not preapproving classes, that will audit at the end of the year like we always do. Testing instruments, we've taken a lot of that out. Um, as far as what, how you guys test your people, um, since it's not pre-approved programs, it's, it's not going to matter. We're just going to take your hours at the end of the year. Same with colleges and universities and specialized schools. And then that preapproval um, program. We're allowing emergency medical training and law enforcement training to um, offer up to sixteen hours of credit. Uh, so if somebody was a volunteer firefighter, but a full-time EMT or law enforcement person, they could use some of that training towards their volunteer educational incentive pay. Um, and then classes taught at TIMA can go towards fire training as well. Um, record storage, um, we have put it in the rules that all educational incentive pay proof of training must be submitted through the records management system, so ACADIS. Um, that that'll give us a, a better way of seeing what's going on since we don't have that preapproval program. Payment procedures, we basically just kind of cleaned this up a little bit, talking about how um, if a specific department or uh, AHJ is not taking the money, there's ways through the Fireman's Association or through uh, the rules to basically be paid as an individual. If they're unable to find a local government, um, then they can coordinate directly with the state fire marshals office. So one of the things that came up at a previous meeting was how to handle an individual who had passed away. Um, prior to receiving their educational incentive pay, um, we've clarified in the rules that if you retire, um, get disability or pass away while serving as an employer volunteer, you have to become eligible first before the triggering event in order to get that pay. Uh, that's just clarification of the rules because there was an unclear um, approach. Um, and now it's uniform across the board. So we've changed the way the waivers are set up a little bit. Um, basically because there's no waiting period, we don't need that one. Um, submission of training programs, we don't need that one. So then the waiver option would only be if someone turned in the March first deadline paperwork late. Um, we use the uh, same factors and considerations, but those are not limiting. We only took out the unavailability of qualified instructors because of the, now the freedom, you're going to have to take that training. Under audit, um, instead of it being maintaining records for sixty months, we've put that you should maintain all audit, auditable records up to the next audit. So once you're audited, anything from the past audit, that's going to be your records maintenance. Um, we have to do that for the comptroller, but it, it'll just basically the most recent audit paperwork can keep. We took out this, the commission members and staff can make unannounced departments to visit training classes. Um, just because we won't know who's training what, when, there's really no way to um, surprise anybody, you know, but they could still swing by any day just to see what's going on, I guess. But we've taken that out of the rule. And that's the end of chapter seven.
So as you can see, we got pretty radical. We wanted to make this as easy and streamlined as possible for departments. And I think with the work that we did over the past few months, three months, um, we had a goal to present this as a package to you all by the end, by this meeting. And we worked very diligently to make that happen. And what we're going to talk about in the work in the business meeting is we're going to look for your approval to go ahead and move it to the next step and start with the uh, internal review so we can go to a rule hearing. Any questions?
I just have one. In the chapter seven, there was a thing about hours relating to law enforcement and EMS and then TIMA. It specified sixteen for EMS and law enforcement, but what are the TIMA hours? Like, if they go to a forty-hour course, does that suffice their on radiation detection for a week? Is that, does that suffice their in-service for the year?
Yes.
Okay. And is there a way that we might be able to help with that with EMS and police? Because I know that we may have some individuals here today that may be requesting some stuff regarding to the police side of the house, so.
So one of the things that we, we looked at was first, taking away the preapproval, right? Let's eliminate that. There's no need for it. But now, what does the training look like? Well, basically what we just did was any documented training that you've done during the calendar year can be utilized towards their, your TCA mandated thirty or forty hours. Okay? But we had some caveats because it is the firefighting commission that's issuing this. So we do have to have some firefighting education that's involved. If we allowed forty hours of EMS training, we're defeating what the firefighting education incentive pay is.
Okay.
So we had to, we had to have some limits there because this is the firefighting commission.
And I saw that you got, it was stricken out like the domestic violence and the?
Because once again, it doubles that story because it's already state law that you're required as a firefighter to have that.
Yeah.
We just felt that we shouldn't have that tied to EIP. So because you have to do it anyways, you're going to do it and you can still have that as part of your in-service, right? But there's no need to have it in there.
And with those, it doesn't matter if I get it through a police department, a fire department or a EMS agency. If I got Vanessa K free, it all counts. Is that the way we're looking at that?
That's correct.
Okay, good, good. I don't want to tie people's hands, so.
And that's what, as you saw with the number of red lines that did take place, we pretty much said, here it is. And because when you look at posts and you look at the E- EMS board, that's pretty much the same route that they're at.
Yeah.
Whatever documented training that is there, they don't go through the preapproval processes. So why are we still?
Would it be, let me just, I'm just asking this as a question. Would it be an issue rather than sixteen hours to make it twenty of the forty? Would that be hard to add four more hours?
I don't see where, it, it could be something that we can discuss during the rule hearing.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it. Y'all did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Now to the big one. Dental accreditation edits.
Well, here's why I don't have to yell across the room. Morning, everybody.
Morning, you don't know me.
Uh, my name's Greg Palmer. I'm the, the new accreditation manager for Tennessee. And one of the first things that I did was basically kind of sit down and go through everything to figure out where we're at, where we stand with everything and what things look like. So you should have gotten access to the document that I put together in an outline format. Um, kind of breaking down everything. One thing too, real quick, everybody should have, at your desk table, should have had just a snapshot of their last five years of the number of certifications that have been issued. Uh, that was just some bullet that was given to me. And so I'm providing that to all of you so you can take a look at that and.
Greg, is that IFSEC and Pro Board or is that just IFSEC or?
I don't, so, and Heather can correct me if I'm wrong. The way we are set up with Pro Board is you take the class, we issue you your IFSEC certification. If you want Pro Board, you have to contact Pro Board directly as a student. So we don't necessarily have a means of tracking who does that.
I just didn't know if that included how many I would send out applications where they had passed. That's what I was looking for.
It would be, it would be the exact same because if you passed.
That's curious, I was asking, I just wanted to.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't, it would just be the same. So if, if five hundred people passed HMA, then five hundred people got the application to do Pro Board.
Right.
Um, so there's that. Um, there are some, um, a few things that I will point out. Um, the driver operator airport and aircraft rescue and firefighting certifications, you can see across the board there. As far as the numbers go, uh, those are fairly low. Um, plans is a, a zero across the board because we haven't actually implemented anything with that. We're working on that and that's part of the, the ten thirty program that's going to be being worked on before the end of this year. Um, FLSC two, the fire life safety educator level two, uh, you can see the numbers there. Wildland one and two also, both um, fairly low numbers. Uh, one thing, uh, where's it at? Ins- inspector one and inspector two. So inspector two has low numbers, but moving forward, inspector two is going away because it is being combined with just inspector now with the way the standard has kind of combined different levels and whatnot. So there is no more inspector one, two and three. It's first responder inspector and then inspector. So level two, moving forward, there won't be a level two because there's, it doesn't exist in the standard anymore. So those are the numbers as far as the last five years. The twenty twenty-five is up through Ju- uh, July sixteenth, so pretty current. Um, but that'll give you the snapshot. And if you have any questions uh, about that information, I'll be happy to do my best to answer it. And if not, I'll defer to the director. She can provide any historical information as far as that's needed.
Um, where uh, some of this comes from is uh, Greg actually came and sat with me for a few hours and we had a long conversation about the state of accreditation. And so I tasked him with, tell me or tell us how many certifications we've actually been able to issue over the past five years and what does that look like? Is there areas that maybe we don't need to concentrate so much on and maybe just do away with? Or is there, you know, things that we need to focus our attention more on? Um, and so I think it was best that if we had this information in our hands, we could actually make educated decisions on what does the state accreditation look like. So thank you for putting this together.
Another move, yes, sir. Um, and with that, I'll move over to the, the actual documentation, the outline that you all were given. Um, I tried to capture everything as far as the state of accreditation goes, so kind of all aspects. So, um, I'll just start right off the, the top. Um, Commissioner Scott, would you like, would you prefer me to go level by level and talk about it? Or would you rather me kind of summarize it since there is?
What is the will of the board? I think because we've gone a year and a half without an accreditation manager, I think it's going to be important that we actually go line by line and up the prize. Everyone in agreement?
Yes. Fair enough. Um, I will say that when we get into the, the details of each program, a lot of it is duplicative in nature. And so in that sense, I'll, I'll spend more time on the very first one because I'll kind of go into the details of what that is. And then I can, we can just refer back to, you know, it's the same as this one, same as that one. As far as the, the specific policies or procedures. Um, so as you can see, from an IFSEC standpoint, we're accredited to twenty-nine levels, Pro Board twenty-eight. The only program that is not dual accredited is the airport firefighter and that is just IFSEC. Um, currently, we're not working on any new levels to add. We are just working on trying to get everything caught up to where it needs to be. Uh, fixed, tweaked, whatever that looks like, uh, making sure we're in compliance with all of our levels before we try to add more workload to to what we're doing. Um, our upcoming site visits, just for kind of informational purposes, IFSEC will be June, uh, tentatively is June first through fifth of twenty twenty-six. Uh, that's the dates that we've requested through with IFSEC and Pro Board won't be until June of twenty twenty-seven. So we have a little bit of time there to to mess with the uh, to get everything ready for Pro Board. Um, based off of that, we can jump right into each one of the program levels. Uh, we'll start with airport firefighter. Uh, currently, on our website, we're using the twenty fifteen edition, practical skills, and we should be using the twenty nineteen edition, practical skills. Both IFSEC and Pro Board have policies that says, uh, Pro Board, it's two years. So anytime a new standard changes, we have two years to implement it from a Pro Board standpoint and IFSEC allows for three years. Because we are dual accredited and everything except for ARF, all of our programs basically have a two-year implementation date. So anything you see kind of dates further in the past, that's, that should be a red flag in most instances. Um, there are a few programs right now, like the FLSC stuff. Being a twenty fourteen, it was delayed because of the consolidation program that was going on with NFPA. So while it looks bad because it's eleven years ago, it was still technically the current edition that's acceptable. So uh, there are some exceptions to that rule. But we should be, as far as the airport firefighter goes, we should be, um, we should have implemented the twenty nineteen addition as of twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-one. So we're about four years behind on, on those practical skills. Um, the next two bullets there, practical skills, I broke it out from an IFSEC standpoint and a Pro Board standpoint uh, for the simple fact, just to kind of keep it clean and keep it even. Uh, and I, I will apologize, my knowledge on end notes and footnotes with Microsoft Word aren't as good as my knowledge with accreditation. Um, so I, as I went back after this document was, was sent out, some of the, the little notes there may be on, tagged to the wrong rule. Uh, but if you read through the document and then you read through the rule, it, it should have made somewhat of a little bit of a sense to, to kind of tie it all together. So um, if I did tweak that a little bit, I apologize. Uh, but essentially, anything that is being conducted in-house, uh, we do not have a manner or mechanism in place to ensure, one, that everything's being done uniformly. That the instructor is standing there with the skill sheet, making sure that the student is doing the skills properly. Uh, we don't have a mechanism to make sure that while they are doing the testing, that the students are being separated. Because technically by the policies of accreditation between Pro Board and IFSEC, students are supposed to be, if they're tested, if they've already done their testing, they are not allowed to be with the students that haven't tested yet because they can talk, they can chitter chatter and all that kind of stuff. And so there's rules as far as how the students have to be separated. Uh, and anything that revolves around the proctor, there's no positive control over is the person really qualified to be testing this particular skill. It's It's basically left up to the department. And with almost six, seven hundred departments in the state of Tennessee, that's essentially six, seven hundred different ways that this can be be done. And from an accreditation standpoint, it's it's gotta be uniform. It's gotta be the same standard across the board for any type of testing event. Uh, and and that's essentially, um, all the different policies that are listed there, one, one A, one B. Um, it it ties into that. Um, same thing with the the Practical Skills for ProBoard as well. Um, being tested in 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 real time with somebody watching them, understanding what they're supposed to be looking for. Uh, that's essentially, uh, when we talk about in-house Practical Skills, it's it's tied to the proctor, okay? It's not so much what they're doing, driving the fire truck, putting up a ladder, that stuff is that stuff. But from an accreditation standpoint, it's, there's gotta be some governance over who's allowed to do that. Um, the next step, uh, the the bullet number five, um, from my understanding, majority of the Aircraft Rescue and Firefighting Certification is being done on military installation. From an IFSEC standpoint, ProBoard is not as big on the jurisdictional piece, but IFSEC, uh, they're big on, you have a jurisdiction and that's where you're allowed to to teach and certify your firefighters. The state of Tennessee is not allowed to go to Alabama. The state of Tennessee is not allowed to go to Kentucky and to include military installations. The Department of Defense is accredited through IFSEC and ProBoard, and we just can't go on to the installation and teach and certify their firefighters to our standard because we're essentially violating the policy of we're going into their jurisdiction. Now, it doesn't mean it can't be done. There's just a process that has to be followed as far as getting Tennessee on board, getting D O D on board, and then getting the approval of IFSEC. And then we can do that, but it's just something that's gotta be done prior to any of the classes actually taking place. And right now, we're not doing that. Um, and the last piece there, um, currently, there's no process in place to ensure all the prerequisites have been met for live-fire training. Fourteen oh-three, uh, twenty eighteen edition, four point three point one, it lists out about eleven categories of uh, knowledge that the students have to have done prior to any kind of live-fire training. And without a way to capture that, that it, you know, whether it be an attestation or a some kind of a form, anything, there's not a, there's not a mechanism in place to to guarantee that the students that are going for certification have completed that training prior to. Anybody have any questions on airport? Do you want me to go through it all? Go for it, sir.
Mr. Palmer, I I appreciate you putting this packet together and showing us where we're deficient. What is your recommendations to fix these deficiencies? Because how do we fix the agreement with the Department of Defense? You say that it's a process. What is the process? How do we fix it? What is the process with the Practical Skills being conducted? Because let's move down to the Driver Operator. Right now, somebody in my department wants to test for Driver Operator, and they've gone through a class or whatever, and it's not at T Factor. We can print those skills off. And I'll just tell you what our standard is at Franklin Fire Department. You have to be a instructor, and you have to have at least firefighter two, which is what we were under the understanding that you had to have to teach this. And then we go even further at our department, and it has to be an engineer with those two certifications that does the check-offs for the people that are doing P D O or A A O. So is this not gonna add a bunch of, is this not gonna add a bunch to our middle and east and west Tennessee coordinators as far as having to do practical check-offs for these events?
So there's, uh, ultimately, the decision on how we move forward will be up to you all as the commission. Um, there's a couple of options. One, we can make it where, and I say we, you all, um, can make it where every testing event that the that the coordinators do, a hundred percent of all the practical skills get done there. I I would not recommend that. That's not practical, um, from a standpoint of cost, of time, of every, like, almost every aspect of that is not a practical option, right? But but it is an option. It's an option on the table. The other option, the the one that probably makes the most sense and has the least amount of impact, is coming up with a process to approve the people that are in your fire department, in your fire department, in your fire department that are doing this, and allow them to continue doing that. Uh, I can tell you that the state of North Carolina, everything that they do is away from the accredited agency. So this Office of State Fire Marshal is the accredited agency in North Carolina. But they don't do any training, and they don't actually do any testing. It is all done through community colleges, fire departments, and high schools. But there's a process for those instructors to be approved to actually go through and, one, teach the class. Because in North Carolina, they have a little bit more governance over the training specifically. Um, where here, we we're more concerned with the testing piece of that. So they have to go through a process to be able to teach the class. There's a process for them to be able to grade the practical skills. And then there's a a process, if you wanna be a proctor, to be given a written exam. Now, where, from my small, I've only been here since April, so my small piece of information with the way we do business in in Tennessee is that would have an impact on the people that are gonna be teaching and or that are gonna be signing off on the practical skills, but not so much on the general fire service public, if you will. But ultimately, we've got to, so you you explained the process at your fire department, and that sounds fantastic. But we can't guarantee that that's being done at every fire department that's running these classes. And that in lies where the issue is. We have no way to be able to say that everybody's doing it just the way you are. Or even more stringent than you are, or way less than you are. There's there's nothing that that lays that out for us to be able to say, this is how we're doing it. It's across the board. Everybody's getting the same treatment. Everybody's being fairly graded and evaluated to actually earn their certification.
Commissioner Henry, I'd like to expand on that. What that would look like is the commission would come come up and create and some kind of evaluator program. And for the individuals that you would have within your department that are gonna be your evaluators for these practical skills, they would have to attend this class at the commission or that's being instructed by us and get the blessing and the approval from the commission to be able to conduct and sign off on those skills. And so that will kind of keep streamlined so that we know exactly who is evaluating these students within those departments and those organizations. Because again, back to what he said, right now, right now, we don't know. You have a, you have a great policy in place, but we don't know what policy is in place at every department.
So with that credentialing or whatever that's gonna be, is that a, is that like, um, earning a cert that will stay in your ACAS file, and once you have it, it doesn't go away until you either retire or you decide not to be a fireman anymore? You, for the rest of your fire career, you can be an evaluator?
Yeah.
And does it cover all disciplines? Or are they individual disciplines you would have to come to a class for?
So the idea that we have been tossing around is you would be blessed to be an evaluator, but you would only be able to evaluate to up to whatever levels and disciplines you hold. So if you have someone that only holds an instructor, they can only teach up to an instructor. You have someone that has officer four, they can teach all the way up to officer four. But you would only be allowed to evaluate whatever disciplines you hold.
And does that change as they receive those disciplines? If you have a fire officer three that does his fire officer four, then did, if he's got that discipline, does he fall into that category then to be able to teach that class? Or does he have to come back and take a different?
No.
Okay, so it would be grandfathered each certificate. You obtain the individual.
And ultimately, if that if that's what, how you want it to look like, then that's what.
Well, I think the other route, sir, we will kill our regional coordinators, and that's. That is not possible at all.
And I I agree wholeheartedly, uh, but I I want it from a transparency standpoint.
Sure.
It's an option.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. Yeah.
And and to your question, sir, let me be clear, like, I I understand that this is kind of a poke in the eye, but it's a poke in the eye a around the room. Um, I'm I'm here to identify what this is, but I'm also here to do everything that I can do in my power to make sure that we fix it and make it right.
And that was my question in behind, how do we fix it? Because it's ultimately, it was our responsibility to take care of this in the past, and it has been taken care of. We're not doing it the right way, basically.
So with what you're explaining and what y'all are thinking, that's gonna coincide with what IFSEC and ProBoard, what's the, would it make their requirement?
So ultimately, there's certain terms, so when, uh, and during the the law briefing, we've talked about projects and practical skills. From a practical skill standpoint, the practical skill is something that's graded in real time. So I raise the ladder. You watch me raise the ladder. If I do it good, you pass me. If I do it wrong, you fail me. A project is something that can be handed off to the student, kind of like a task book or a, um, a portfolio kind of a thing. And they're able to go back, work on it, and then bring it back for grading. And and but it doesn't have to be done in real time. Currently, the way we're doing what we email out practical skills for like the Fire Officer Program, the Fire Life Safety Educator Programs, we're calling it Practical Skills, and we're sending out a random sampling of the Practical Skills to do projects and to be within policy. They have, the student has to do one hundred percent of those practical skills. And I say practical skills because it is a, it's still a skill, right? Putting a budget together, whatever. But we will, we will call them projects because that allows them to email it. We're not doing anything wrong there. It allows you to go do the work in your time, however, you know, whatever that time limit looks like, and then send it back.
The same way you're doing a college course.
Correct.
Projects.
Correct. Um, and so ultimately, that part of it, it it keeps us in compliance. And really, what it all boils down to is what IFSEC and ProBoard are looking for. They they do have some guidelines that says you gotta got, you gotta kinda do this, or you gotta do that. But at the end of the day, they're looking at our policy and making sure that we're doing what our policy says that we do. So if it says we allow, you know, three thousand people out across the state of Tennessee to be able to to sign off and test for firefighter or driver operator or whatever that looks like, they just make sure that what we say we're doing is what is actually happening across the board. Because I can assure you that all the different site visits that I have gone on for IFSEC and seen how other states and other entities do their their stuff, it's, there's fifty states and there's fifty ways of of skinning this cat. Um, and and as an example, the state of Miss, uh, Montana, you will not take a, uh, um, a written exam for your firefighter one or two. It is one hundred percent practical skill-based. So to your point, you're to to your look, right? I mean, it, there's the wide spectrum. There's a lot of folks that are super heavy on written exams, and there's other folks that are super heavy on practical skills.
So, uh, are they just administering like chapter tests during the course of the firefighter one program? And they're accepting that as they pass that? So that's a passing written?
I have not specifically been to the state of Montana.
Okay.
To be able to.
Sure, sure.
One hundred percent say exactly what they're doing. Uh, but I, a good friend of mine that I used to work with, uh, went up there very, um, I don't know what the word is, but he was kind of reserved, if you will, thinking like, they're gonna have to sell me on how they're doing.
Gathering information.
And he went up there and he's like, they're they're knocking it out of the park. They don't, whether it be uh, like an oral exam, when you talk about building construction or having to, you know, whatever that looks like. Uh, but he came back and and was like, they're, for their firefighter one and two, they do not take any kind of written exams. So.
So I'm gonna ask the other elephant in the closet question here. Where do we draw the line in the sand to correct this? Because you've got people out here right now that are holding projects.
Mm-hmm.
Across middle, across Tennessee, that have to submit those. You've got fire departments that are teaching classes that are coming up, whether it's wildland or academy classes or whatever, that are fixing to have skills and and testing events coming up.
Correct. So my recommendation, just one person here, would be to determine what that date looks like as the commission. Because ultimately, we gotta come up with what that program or what that process would look like as well, right? Like, if we're gonna come up with ways for people to become approved evaluators or any, whatever that looks like, we've gotta come up with the outline of that, because we can't just say as of today, stamping the the table and saying this is the way it is. We need to develop what the process looks like and then set a date that uh, uh, that allows those departments to finish up what they're working on. Uh, I am no way, shape, or form trying to say we need to do this. Now, I would, I would, I need to emphasize that the concerns that have been identified are are big concerns. Um, I have been a a a part of meetings with IFSEC where states have been told they have to rescind certifications that were already issued. My goal is to get this as fixed as quickly as possible. And as long as we're moving forward, I think we're on the right track. Um, but we, this is stuff that can't wait. We we need to start moving forward to to.
You've kinda drawn some lines in the sand a little bit because of the dates that you've placed in here for IFSEC and ProBoard. Those are site basics for us. I understand that. But you would like to have that done.
Absolutely. When it comes to, um, next June, we need to ultimately have something in place.
A packet to give them to say, right, is what we're doing now.
Right. I got a question. This process, would we handle that, and this might be for legal, would we handle that process in rule or in a policy? Because if we do it in rule, I feel like we probably need to be putting that in place now.
So.
Yeah.
And and Greg, correct me if you feel differently, opening up the rules to say like the project slash practical, taking out a lot of that pre-approval process, and then just fixing the NFPA standards to where we can quickly update chapter six is what we've done as as proactively as we can. I think some of the other things, it will come down to what the decisions the commissions ma- commission makes. So for, uh, anything that would be the internal firefighting commission office, that's easily gonna be handled in a a standard operating procedure policy. If it's something that is going to be an encumbrance or requirement of the outside of the fire service, that would be in rule. Um, but unfortunately, you guys know how fast our our rules move. So what, one thing that we've discussed is, uh, and and we talked with Commissioner Scott a little bit about this in another matter. It's allowing the office to have some type of consent calendar in the rule. So like, like allowing the director to grant certain waivers and then come tell you guys at the next meeting, here's, here's what we did. We're just seeking the commission's approval. Um, so I don't know that it would necessarily apply in this. Um, depending on how you guys decide what to do, but Greg might have some other thoughts.
Yes, sir. To your question, I think right now, you're already letting, for lack of a better term, anybody sign off on the practical field, right? Because sure, the department says they're the SME, but from a uniformity standpoint, as far as we know exactly who's certified and qualified to actually be able to do that, we don't, we don't have a mechanism in place. So it's already being done in the field, right? I mean, the driver operator stuff is already being signed off in the field. It's just gonna be a matter of of the commission saying, okay, we're gonna keep doing that. But to be able to do that, you have to have this and this, or this, 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 and this, whatever you guys decide for that to look like.
I didn't mean to interrupt you. So that's basically just an internal process with the office?
I would defer to these two as far as.
I mean, there's there's no reason for that to be a rule.
I I think the rule is setting the minimum standard, and if the commission wants to to raise that standard based off of some internal approval by the office, I think that's within your jurisdiction.
So one of the things that we did here, when we did chapter six, Greg was a very big part of our our meetings. And he he gave us a lot of guidance with, hence why we added verbiage of projects now, okay? Because by just taking these little things and keeping this package as small as possible to hopefully move it fast, um, by just adding that project piece in there, now it's just a matter of internally, those driver practicals are now driver.
Projects.
Project.
Our J P Rs that they're checking on.
Correct.
I understand that. So I guess I have a question for the director. If we go the route of, we're gonna set up a, for me to be able to check off firefighter one, I've gotta come have your class. Who's comprising your class? Is it gonna be your, is it gonna be your accreditation manager and your regional coordinators that put this class together and present it to you, and you say, or do we have to approve that? Or how does that, is that an internal, I can, maybe this is illegal. Is that an internal thing that we can give her the ability to approve that, and then they can start teaching it? Or how does that go, Ms. Mary Beth?
You you can speak first if you have specific thoughts. I can give the general advice.
I was gonna say, from going through what I just went through, as far as rebuilding the commission one oh, one oh one PowerPoint, if there's anything of that nature that we obviously are gonna have to build, um, I could build it with them, you know, with the help of my staff. Um, I will tell you that it will have to go to approval through T D C I as far as the, anything that we print out and also create as far as PowerPoint. Um, so there is a process in place, but as far as you granting us, I mean, I think, I I I think if y'all decide to go that route, then that would be the way to go. So like I said, we could build it, but we'll have to go through the process of T D C I to get it approved.
I don't think there's any problem with the commission, um, voting to give the director the authority to to handle that and report back to the commission.
All right, Mary Beth, so this is for you. So let's say we grant that today, and we do that in the business meeting, and we say, hey, let's get this going. What's the time frame that we can have this up and ready to roll out?
So.
As far as from your your perspective?
So it kinda depends how quickly the program jumps. So i- if 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 building this class, these classes, is take six months in research, and we need to consult with other states and things like that, then it would just be, the internal side would just be reviewing the actual physical paperwork. We, like, legal doesn't have the subject matter knowledge to know if y'all are doing it right. But as far as like PowerPoints, handouts, things like that, typically a couple weeks.
Okay.
Um, but whatever the building side, that's outside of my knowledge.
So this is a question for both of you. So what's your thinking on how long that process should take?
To put a class together?
And and to roll this out to where we're in compliance and try to start getting people done?
Uh, uh, when we talk about compliance, in my small frame of reference, I think our biggest piece is whatever it's gotta go through from the legal standpoint. Uh, from a class standpoint, I can, I can have a class by the end of next week to you all. Like here's, this is what it needs to look like. Like, one, that's part of the urgency from my part as well, right? Like I'm not just standing up here to say, we need to fix all this and then let's take six months to do it. So this, but I could have that to you, you know, quick. Um, within, you know, give me a week and a half to put everything together and, and make sure all the references are tied together. And I can have that to y'all for review.
And something, I'd like to add that, just to clarify, we're not talking just one or two disciplines. We're talking.
Oh, yeah.
All disciplines. Right now, we have three different ways of, we have, you go for HMA, HMO, five one, five two, to the commission testing. And you are watched by a contractor or proctor and done your skills there. Then you have your PDOs, your ADOs, your instructors, where it's being done in the field. And we all have really no control of who's doing those. And then you have your officer level series of where an email is being sent out and a project is being completed and turned back in to be graded. So we have multiple different ways that we're trying to manage this and it's very confusing for the fire service. But if we look at this as it's the same across the board from HMA to firefighter, or I'm sorry, fire officer four, is these practicals are done in-house by these individuals who have attended our evaluator school, whatever we decide to call it. They can then conduct those in-house and turn that paperwork in. And there's no more confusion. There's no more, do we do it this way? Do it, do it that way? So I just wanted to clarify that and put that out there. That's kind of what we're.
And that's what I was looking at. That's the reason I was asking, because I think we just need to streamline it across the board. And so it's all the same. It's all done the same way. And then that way we can then turn, turn around, start rolling it out to get these people certified. Because I mean, we're fixing to start a new year of in-service. I mean, we need to have people that are gonna do that. You're fixing to start a new, whole new year of training here in a few months. And that's something that we need to have done and done.
Would we be able to have something? Would you all be able to have something back to us by October?
Certainly.
Yeah. As a draft and something we might be able to implement.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
I think the first of the year, we're. I think what you said about the instructor and the disciplines kinda goes in with what we're doing now. When coordinator comes, we host an event for a practical checkoff. Even to our personnel that helps in the checkoff process has to be an instructor one.
Yes.
Uh, so the only thing you're really adding to that is the discipline process of whatever you're trained to is as high as you can go.
Right.
I mean, that's a minimal change for that aspect of it, other than building a program to get out to everybody, you know?
But it now will open the doors for all certifications to be done.
Right, which I think is great. Uh, cause you know, we, you may have one department, may, small department may have two or three people that needs to take a uh, practical and can't find one, but they can do it yourself. So now when the next written's done, everything's done, then they can go to their written test. So I think it's a great move. It's just, I, I agree, we need a program, but I think the simplified thing is, is it's already there for instructor. You gotta be an instructor one. It's a matter of just adding a little verbiage to it.
Absolutely.
Got a question?
Would the instructor that's doing the checkoff, which award is this, would they be required to come and take this class?
Yes, essentially, yes.
Okay, so I would have to stand my, uh, yeah, if they were gonna do the checkoff, like you said, the field rep out, do my checkoff. I gotta have them see that line up through the checkoff. Those five that, that some, in your class, correct?
So I, I wouldn't say come and take it. I would say take it. Cause the way.
It's offered out there.
It, this may be, that's what they're gonna come back to us in October with, is what that looks like. So it could be something as simple as an ACADIS class. Or it could be something that where the regional directors or the regional coordinators are gonna host regional classes to hit the areas. So this is where it's in its infancy.
I think if the regional coordinators are coming out and instructing these classes, that is going to move the deadline out. Because they're gonna have to do so many classes to cover their entire areas.
Yeah.
So if it's done virtually, you're gonna cover the entire state.
Where you could set all five of your guys in a classroom and let them watch it and then submit their paperwork and they be practical.
So, but that's where this is in infancy stage. And so in October, when they come back to us, hopefully they'll say, this is the medium that we're using to go ahead and push this out.
My, my only concern with doing it online is all you do is watch it, right? You, you hear whatever it is that I say, but there's no, like right now, there's lots of questions, right? Cause this is something new. You throw something like this where it's a, a global change way that the entire state does business, I feel like there's gonna be a lot of questions. And you lose that ability to kind of answer questions and get people's.
But you go off to do a webinar.
True. You, I, I, I just say from a straight online where they just like.
My concern is if you limit it to in-person per region, you have big areas.
Oh, you're gonna.
And you're gonna implement, let's just say, a March first date and this doesn't even get pushed out to the end of the year. There, it's impossible to cover your entire area.
No, but it could also be done through a teams.
Yeah, I mean, where, where you can interact.
I mean.
Absolutely.
But that, that's where, you know, when they come back to us in October, at that point, we can say, you know what? Is there a better idea?
Mm-hmm.
Right. So let them go ahead and, and put something together and, and bring it back to us and let, let's see what, uh, what it looks like.
You just can't put the departments out.
Agreed.
Give them three months to have all these people trained and not have the means for them to do it.
And the conversation.
Host more classes.
I understand that, but they already can have testing events set up and then we implement this rule and their people haven't had time to make it. Now we've just put them in a big predicament. So we have to have multiple options.
Agreed.
Mm-hmm.
Agreed. But, and I wanna take this time, listen. Mr. Palmer, you have walked into what I perceive is a mess. And I'm sorry, um, that's again, we have to take fault for that as the commission and as deep back and, um, we shouldn't have been like this, but I appreciate you identifying all these issues and helping us to get them changed so that we can better across Tennessee for all the firefighters. So thank you for coming in and jumping right in both feet and both arms and well, okay, your whole body basically, to get all this taken care of. Um, and again, I'm not trying to, I wanna comment, we're not trying to kill the regional coordinators. We want, we know that you guys have a lot to do and the director has a lot to do, but we have to get this out there so that we can all help each other. Um, so again, I, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
So with that being said, would you like him to continue going through his list or did you get pretty much adjusted?
I have suffice what I think we need to see. I think they need to. Yeah, absolutely.
The, the only thing I would like to just, just to point out for the sake of the conversation is, um, our, with the firefighter one program. Um, currently not being able to, uh, the form that's online as far as the live fire piece goes, there, it's not addressing the above grade and below grade. Uh, and that isn't the, the NFPA standard that those two fires have to be completed as well. Um, along with the fourteen oh three verification stuff. Um, so just to, to point that out. Um, and the, um, where is it? Where is it?
So Mr. Palmer, what needs to be added? You can take it. I'm assuming something needs to be added to that form, cause I thought there was a below grade in the.
The one that I looked at online didn't have anything that specifically said above grade or below grade as far as the form that's, that gets signed off on.
Okay.
And there may be, again, my little bit of knowledge as to where I'm at. I- i- if it is there, then that's great.
Okay.
Just based off of what I had seen.
I guess this is legal maybe, Ms. Mary Beth, if that is the case, can that form just be
Yeah.
Changed and adopted and that becomes.
Yeah, that, so if the office sends, um, a edited version of that form, we can just send it up our chain of command and get that, get that fixed within a day or two.
Perfect.
Pretty sure there is a form.
Somewhere.
That, yes, that includes above and below.
Okay.
This year, the state website will have some different stuff than what's actually, it, it, sometimes it's wrong. So.
Ms. Mary, I missed that. I'm sorry. You said the one on there.
I believe there is a form that, that states above and below.
Okay.
Um, we done one earlier this year and I'm pretty sure that it stated.
Perfect. Then that's fantastic.
And make sure that the correct one is there.
We can find the right one and email Andy Deal to fix that link today.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, the, the, the only other big kind of ticket item would be the, the FAO program is currently being tested with one test and the student is being awarded the pumps and then the aerial certification. Per ISAC policy, if you're awarding more than one level of certification for a, for a class, we can combine all the classes together. We want to. We just have to be able to show that the student is in fact passed the exam for pumps, for aerials. And with it being one combined test and not being graded separately, we are currently unable to do that.
So before we actually graded it in the three different NFPA chapters, so FAO was chapters four, five and six.
Okay.
Cause PDO was chapters four and six and aerials five and six, I believe. Or I may be.
It's right there, something along those lines, yes.
So, and we used to grade those as individuals. And if you didn't, if you failed chapter three or chapter four, you failed the whole test. So, and it was in the previous director that we actually went and took it back to a seventy passing for a cumulative. So what you're saying is we need to take that back.
So whatever they would test for the pumps piece, that would be a test. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, it's a hundred fifty question test?
It is.
So we could do a seventy-five and a seventy-five. We could do a hundred, a hundred, a fifty, fifty, whatever the commission decides to be appropriate. But it just has to be two separate exams that we show that they.
It's kinda like the rope. There can't be a hundred and fifty question test. We gotta divide it up.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Well, and that takes us into a whole nother avenue also, because in policy, they determine the, the commission office, we can determine what that test size actually looks like.
And, and that's our next step. Once these rule, this rule package starts moving, we have internally redlined proposals to the policy and procedure. And we're gonna break a lot of that down into individual SOPs for the, uh, office. So y'all don't have to be worried about the, like how the office runs stuff, but then the stuff that affects the fire service, we will bring to you guys also hopefully in October. Um, for your consideration.
Tell. Anybody has any questions?
I have a question. I, I just appreciate your hard work and these are all questions that we've been asking for a year or more now trying to find answers to and nobody can give us answers. And I appreciate your diligence in going through and diving deep and getting this information to us.
The, the one thing that I tried to convey to Commissioner Scott is I understand my role. I'm the accreditation manager. I'm here to make sure our programs check boxes and keeps the seals on it. Everything outside of that is, is, that's your ball field. That's your game. That's.
Yeah.
So all I'm doing is just making sure we stay within where we need to stay. And I have my business cards here, so before you all leave, I'll make sure you get one. So that way moving forward, if you wanna call me, shoot me an email. What's this? Why is this? And it's, it's not Greg's opinion. Like that's, and that's why I tried to put all of the, the policy specifically at, at the end of this document. So you could see that this wasn't Greg just saying, well, you can't do that. Well, how come? Cause you can't. Well, here's the policy. This is.
That's what we would get.
This is why, this is why we can't do that, or this is how we're allowed to do that. And if there's not a policy about it, then we basically have free reign to do it however you want to do it. And we can be as creative as you want, like Montana that doesn't do any written exams. Or we can do it as, however y'all decide you want to do that and what you want that to look like. So.
But I just wanna clarify this one last thing.
Yes, sir.
Between now and June for ISAC and June twenty-seven for Pro Board, is this kinda like our grace period, like to clean this up? We're not gonna get in big, big trouble and start having to, or is there a potential that we could have to take certificates or certifications back?
There's a very real possibility of that.
Okay.
What I will tell you is if we're moving forward and we can show that, hey, we've identified this stuff.
Absolutely.
ISAC understands that every single state's done differently. Pro Board understands that all these states are done differently. If we can show that we have, you know, proposals in to change a policy or to update a policy or a rule or whatever that looks like. At that point, that's when they're, you're given a little bit of, you know, a little bit of grace to say, okay, you're doing your due diligence. Um.
If we sit on it though.
The example that I can give is a, a state was training to an old standard and certifying to a new standard. So they were, they, they were doing the skills for twenty fifteen, but certifying twenty twenty-two. Well, you can't do that, cause things change, right? And so it was that instance where they were told, you gotta, you gotta take those skills back. So.
But currently we have that issue with instructor one.
Well, anything on, anything in here, there's, there's a, a few, um, that, that we're using old skills for. Um, and it just, it is what it is. And we're, uh, I can say definitively, since I've been here, we've fixed our, we've, I won't say fixed. We've updated the hazmat to four seventy. So minus the hazmat tech, because that falls under the in-house thing that we, we spoke about. Um, but hazmat awareness, HMA, HMO, uh, the mission specifics, um, product control and PPE, those are all up and running good. And NFPA ten thirty-three, the investigator, uh, that technically should have been implemented as of June last year. And nothing was notified to, to the, to ISAC specifically. Uh, and so we got that squared away. We got that fixed. Everything is up and up. And so ten thirty-three is good now as well. So, um, we're, we're making progress. Uh, it's kinda like the elephant, right? One bite at a time. Like we're not gonna just devour this thing this afternoon. So, um, as long as we continually be progressive and as long as we're showing that we're fixing what the problems were, I think that's where your grace comes into play. It's a matter of if we just say, yeah, we've identified a bunch of stuff and we're not really doing anything. And it's like, okay, well, if you're not gonna do anything, then you're gonna force the accrediting bodies to have to do something.
Yeah.
And that's what I'm trying to alleviate as well, um, by coming up with a plan, like a, whatever that looks like. If that means we need to put a, a subcommittee together to figure out what this process or program looks like, then great, let's do that. Uh, but if, whatever that is and however that moves forward, just moving forward is the key.
Motion for a ten minute break.
In a second.
Okay.
You good? All right. We're gonna take a ten minute break and come back at ten. We'll call it ten forty.
Thank you.
Control over what's being done online. Now, I don't say that anything that's online is wrong. What's online is really the subject matter experts that are like in that that world. But when a standard changes, we don't have the authority or the ability to change that. We don't have the ability to update that to make sure that when we issue a certification that we're meeting all of the standards. And aside from having to try to reach out to them and get the objectives and get all their materials to be able to backcorrelate it. Need to come up with something essentially, right?
Yes, so we're, we are concerned with the whole wildland one and two. As far as Franklin, they do have a force that they have built. As far as other entities, I can't speak. I know some people have just been submitting the S one ninety, the S one eighty, the L. I can't think of the number that correlates with that one. So there doesn't seem to be a good, clear, concise path on how wildland is supposed to be achieved. Now, I will tell you also across the U.S., there are only two states that offer IFSAK and Pro Board wildland one and wildland two, and that's Tennessee and Utah. CAL FIRE does offer wildland one. But most states that have wildland fires, those people, they're gonna have to acquire N W C G. Our wildland one and wildland two does not, you don't get restpost for that. So the certification that we are issuing, they're not able to take that and go get that certification. So unfortunately, it it really doesn't amount to that. So we're, we're kind of leaning towards, do we keep this certification or do we let it go? Because again, it's, and I understand it was brought to the commission back after the October Gatlinburg fire. So I understand that and I understand that as an A H J, they can teach this stuff in-house. But numbers wise, does it warrant us to keep it as a certification level?
So let's tackle the first piece. We as the commission approve what classes are being utilized for certification. Can you tell us right now how many wildland classes we've approved?
This moment, I know of Franklin, but I do not know of any others. I would have to go back and do some more research on that.
Alright, so that would be the first question is how many of the curriculums have we approved and who are they with? Okay, because then at that point, where's the consistency between the three, the five, the seven programs that we've approved for this? Where are they getting their information from? The other thing that's concerning is with wildland and like, like you said, it came about due to the Gatlinburg fires. But if it's just an IFSAK sealed certificate and it has no bearing anywhere outside of, you know, you have to get your red card out west. And if this is not a precursor for that, or is it something that, I mean, is there value there? I guess is the bigger question.
Even with our own Tennessee Department of Forestry, they have to get their red card. They will not accept our IFSAK Pro Board certification for employment. They have to go get their red card.
So then my question once again is what, what is the value?
So I will just tell you what we're doing at Franklin. And when we put together the program, we submitted it to TFAKA and they approved it. It is to work towards getting our red card. We are getting our firefighters' red card certifications so that they can be deployed out to the wildland fires, whether it's out west, whether it's in Gatlinburg, whether it's wherever it may be. If somebody calls and says we need a wildland firefighting team, because we've got two pieces of apparatus right now and we're looking at purchasing more. Now, I realize we're one fire department, State of Tennessee, I get that. But our curriculum is literally set up so that you are getting literally all the JPRs. Like we were out there and I'm just, I took the first class. We were out there trenching, we were out there backburning, we were out there literally doing JPRs line for line for line for line. And the guys that were instructing this were instructors from California that we have hired at our department and their goal is, and we have all, if you look at my well, if you look at my target solutions right now, I have a red card thing that I am working towards to complete my red card certification. To include like I did last year, I did the online. When you renew your wildland, there are four refresher classes that you have to take online. And then there are skills that our department are requiring you to do skills. So the guys that tested all this last year have to go through the five days this year and do the skills out in the field with the people that are trying to get that credential this time. So because we have an active class right now that they are taking the online class to take a full class in upcoming, I believe it's September.
So back to the original question though, if the wildland one and two is not a precursor to the red card, then what is the value?
We have a portion for two that we have for two years ago. However, I haven't been able, we scheduled two of those and neither one of them could we fill to the level, you know, five or six people would register. So we feel there's a need there and we're doing, our recruit classes doing with forestry all the skills, the skills packet basically. Forestry is doing that with them, spending about a day and a half or two days with them during our recruit class. And, and the goal for that was to try to put some people on the street that had at least that baseline. We pre-reck S one thirty, S one ninety and L one eighty, and then they do those skills with forestry. And as a matter of, I'm vice chair of the upper Cumberland too. And last night, we, we pulled a class, a wildland class out of the line for upper Cumberland because nobody's registering for it. So the demand just doesn't seem to be there, although the need is probably still there. Commissioner Bell was there, I believe. About a month ago, we met with some folks from forestry and they shared some statistics with us about, and I was shocked to be quite honest about where Tennessee falls out on the likelihood of major wildland events, like in the top ten in the nation. And so I say all that to say, there's a need there for it. And I'm not sure, you know, there's a lot of agencies are, are not gonna go all the way to the, to the red card. But they need something that that may be less than that, but it's more than nothing in the arena of wildland. So maybe that plays into the discussion.
And this year you've had twenty-five already tests for wildland one. I mean, it's not a great number, but I hate to take certifications away from somebody that may want to earn it.
So my question, because you bring up a good point, we're looking at from twenty-three through twenty-five, we're averaging twenty-four per year. So first question is, is that a certification that you're setting up in, at TFAKA with the recruits? Or is this individual classes like at Franklin, that this is actually your department that's actually getting this each year?
I'm gonna say that was, the majority of those right there from last year was ours and we've got another thirty right now that are enrolled.
So I can tell you the numbers from twenty-four, twenty of those numbers were Franklin. So of the twenty-five between wildland one and two, twenty of those numbers came from one department.
So my question, I guess, is for you, Jason. So have y'all ever thought about doing the certification with the recruits for, for the wildland?
So right now, we're sort of time limited in that ten weeks.
Right, I get that. That's what I was asking.
The goal has been to set them up where they are eligible.
Gotcha.
When they come out of recruit class to take it. I had a discussion, well, one of my firefighters, it's also a career firefighter this week, asked me about helping him submit paperwork to take wildland one. He graduated our recruit academy a few months ago or so. We've had that discussion a little bit. We're just time limited.
Right.
If we can get to the point in the future where we add a little bit of time to the program. Then yes, I think we would definitely look at including that.
So is that something that you let the departments know when they come out that they are ready to test for that? And then it's just up to them whether or not they do it?
Yes, okay.
Okay.
Mr. Hughes, go ahead.
I've got one of the other approved programs, much like what the other person said. Yeah, we haven't ran one since twenty-one, simply because I can't get the volunteer participation to take part in it. We were planning on scheduling to run another one and then I found out yet everything had gone into limbo. I mean, when we talk about a red card, understand a red card is simply an indication you've completed S one thirty, S one ninety, L one eighty, I C S one hundred, I C S seven hundred. You've completed the live burn slash J P R day and then the piece, the, the piece that has the annual expiration on it is your annual arduous pack test. In other words, you've carried forty-five pounds in over three miles in less than forty-five minutes. And then at that point, you've met the requirements for quote a red card AKA an incident qualification card. And then annually, you have to do your recertification as was indicated by Franklin. Annually, you're required to do your wildland updates to meet all the requirements and then you have to redo your arduous pack test. Part of this sounds like it's an opportunity to have the fire commission pair with state forestry to get it to where everybody aligns on board. If this is how we're gonna take our urban, our urban interface firefighters and provide them an adequate level of training to appropriately respond to the events we're going to. It's an oppor, it's, you know, it's an opportunity to get forestry on board, the fire academy, the fire commission, plus all the departments that are participating in this type of program on the same sheet of music. You know, our program was built using Jones and Bartlett's existing book, which parallels all the S one thirty things addition to requiring the required national pieces. And then when possible, bringing forestry in to be there for the skills day evaluation.
Tony, thank you for that. What is it that we're talking about with, are we talking about pausing? Are we talking about going away or are we talking about making it bigger and better?
I'm not, I'm not opposed to reaching out to forestry and finding out if there's a possible way to create some kind of work together where we can see if that's even an option. I will say for right now, we've got to do something with it. So I, I strongly encourage a pause for a while until we figure out exactly. Because the tests and also the skills and things of that nature need to be looked at and cleaned up. So as far as, that's my recommendation for right now.
From the compliance date standpoint, I will point out that wildland is the most out of date. We should have implemented the new standard thing.
Twenty-three.
June thirtieth of twenty twenty-three, so we're officially two years out of compliance with that. And that was kind of the same boat as ten thirty-three was.
Right.
Just sent us the email saying, hey, you guys, where are you at with this? Like that email could be in my inbox right now about wildland. And if we don't have an answer, then it's not a matter of us being able to make the decision of pausing it or, you know, getting rid of it. It, it gets taken away from us at that point.
Right.
Thank you.
So I have a question because I had a gentleman that phoned me the other day and asked a commission question. He was in a test for wildland. And a person, I don't know if it was a regional coordinator who walked in and told him he could stop his test because the new test was gonna be out in three weeks and that he didn't have to take this test because it was fixing to be pushed out. And he goes to stand up and leave the testing event. So we have those issues too right now and we, I just explained to you, we have another class on the books. I have people right now at my department that are doing all their online stuff in preparation for a September rollout of here's your class, here's your JPRs, you can go take your written test.
I can chime in on that because I was that coordinator who did that. What was said was that we're writing out the test and he could no longer accept the test. There was no mention of when the test was drawn out.
Okay.
We were just following orders that had this test not to be taken today, so we had three times.
Okay, so he may have made up the three week, but.
Yeah, yeah, we were there with military.
Okay. Was it mentioned that there was a new test for that?
No, I, I said that right now, we're sending all, all of this on wildland.
But there is a new test. We have, we have sat down and we have looked through it and we have taken our time to verify question by question, line for line, and turned it back into the commission and it was supposed to go in effect on July one.
So where we are on that is the court, the validation piece that everyone helped participate in simply was going through and deciding whether these were good questions or not. The other piece to that is he has to go through it and make sure that those questions meet J P R. Some of the publishers like to take certain things and they will create thirty questions on that one specific J P R and they will miss other J PRs. So to make sure that we're in compliance with our accrediting bodies, it has to be gone through the fine tooth and chrome to make sure that we meet those requirements for our accrediting bodies, that we have to meet at least a minimum of one question per J P R. So the validation piece that y'all helped with was simply more, nothing more than, is it a good question? Is it a bad question? That's where we're at in waiting on. Like I said, when, when Mr. Palmer came in, four seventy was a priority to get it done. And so we're slowly working through these and that's kind of where we are right now is, you know, we've stumbled upon this. We know that this is something that needs to be addressed and that's why we're kind of, that's why we're here today talking about this specific discipline is what do you want us to do with it? Do you want us to keep it? Do you want us to pause it? Do you want us to get rid of it? So again.
And that's, that's why I asked, what is the value?
I, I kind of agree with Commissioner Bell, right? I don't think we should take any certification away from anybody. I mean, they should have the opportunity and if Director Sparks or Chief Sparks is saying that they're doing their piece in the academy that some of these young men and women are coming out of the fire academy with their online stuff and their quote unquote, I guess we're calling it J P R slash their live burns, whatever they're having to do, backburns and digging and, I mean, cutting trenches and all that stuff. If they're doing that in the academy and they're coming out with those things signed off by an instructor that is able to do that, I don't think we should stop people from being able to obtain that certification.
So what I'm hearing is, let's fix it.
One hundred percent, let's fix it. Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we're validating, we already validated the test bank. I didn't know that this man had to go, I didn't know that our accreditation guy had to go back behind our validation and then look for, so he has to literally go back and look at twenty-nine different tests after we validated them to prove that it's okay meeting the JPRs and everything.
That was something I was not aware of.
Yeah, me either.
Validation.
Okay, well, here's, here's an interesting question and I'm glad you brought up testing. You want to talk about how the test banks between the, the two publishers work?
So when we get, so IFSAK, Jones and Bartlett, the two main publishers that are out there. Jones and Bartlett, from my understanding is they will hire a contract writer, they will write a test and then that test comes to us. There's not really any validation process before it comes to us. It is, here it is, kind of a thing. Case in point.
Who could be the contract writer? I mean, could I be that person?
Whoever, whoever Jones and Bartlett decides to contract.
So we don't know if it's a subject matter expert or we don't know who that is. It could be a college student, it could be somebody off the street that just wants to make extra money.
Could it be? Absolutely.
Okay.
I mean, do I think that? Probably not. Yeah, but the possibility is there. But and, and to that point, that could go on either side, IFSAK or Jones and Bartlett.
Yes.
They, they have the authority to hire whoever they deem fit to write that particular test bank. Now, the difference though is, so Jones and Bartlett writes their, writes their exams, they send it to the states. The state does an internal validation, does an external validation where the folks come and look at it. IFSAK was, they will hire a person to write the test, that person writes the test. Then they will bring a group of people to their summer conference each year and they will sit in a room and then they will validate that test bank from subject matter experts in that particular field from around the country. And then once that's done, then it comes to the, to the entities.
So that would almost be like a UL type thing where they did an internal audit, only they've included everybody from across the country to validate.
I have, I have specifically participated in that process to be able to speak definitively that that is what IFSAK does.
On the current test that's been validated, it's to the standard that's out of date. Is that correct?
The test that was validated would be for the new standard.
It would be the most recent standard.
But that is not what is currently printed and, and that's, that's one thing that if, when, if whatever's decided that we keep it, then we are going to have to reprint and issue all those because the test that's currently out right now is to the old standard.
As an example, it's, it was either, and it kind of blurs together at this point, it was either the hazmat ops or the hazmat tech. But the, the test bank from Jones and Bartlett did not address two J PRs. So I had to go in and write two questions that, and the questions don't even come from the book because the book doesn't cover it. Another example, the firefighter, the ten ten, Jones and Bartlett's book. There's a, there's a J P R requirement in hazmat tech which references the firefighter book because it's all kind of tied in there together for different parts. But there's a requirement for a definition of extinguishment. Well, the Jones and Bartlett firefighter book does not provide a definition of extinguishment. I have to write basically Merriam-Webster, what is the definition of? But that, that question will not come from that book because it doesn't exist in that book. And that's just an example. I'm not, you know, that's, it is what it is. And I'm not saying that, I mean, we're predominantly at Jones and Bartlett, so anything that kind of is gonna show up as a deficiency or something that's not good or whatever, it's gonna be kind of neither, neither one of them is gonna be perfect. You're always gonna be able to nitpick something and find something that you like better here, don't like better here, whatever that looks like. But just as examples, as far as, just because we get a test bank from the publisher doesn't make it ironproof, doesn't make it perfect. That's why I sit in the room and make sure all the, all the boxes are lined up. We're provided correlation sheets. IFSAK breaks down the standard a lot farther than Jones and, or I'm sorry, than Pro Board. Pro Board will say you gotta have so many questions on the standard here, where IFSAK will break that standard down by commas and semicolons. And so where Pro Board will say you gotta have, you know, three, five questions here, IFSAK's gonna say, well, because the way it's broken down, you gotta have ten to fifteen questions because the different topics, you know, kind of to the point of what we were talking about during the break, above ground, above grade, below grade. You gotta have one for each one. It's not just a matter of doing the fires, kind of a thing. And, and so that's where I come into play as far as sitting there checking all these boxes and making sure that the banks that you validate as far as the external side of the house, still, we, we're still compliant with every single J P R having some questions for it to make sure that we're a hundred percent.
Well, that would have been nice to know, one of two areas. One, I have sat on the textbook committee for the last six years. That would have been nice to know about those. And two, when we were validating as the internal people, rather than putting that job back on you, we could have literally sat down with those J PRs in those sessions and went, whoa, this is one that's not met. We need to address that. Now, at the time, we didn't have a accreditation manager, so you're welcome. There's something else you get to do. We're sorry.
Let's go back to wildland and what we're gonna do.
Go back to wildland.
And what we're gonna do. So wildland, what do you need so we, so we can fix this?
Essentially, one, it, it kind of, from my understanding, it's the in-house stuff, so that would fall under the Proctor rules that we talked about earlier. Two, but coming up with what the skills look like. If it's all coming from online and then people are submitting those as the course completion and there's no real actual doing of, of skills that we can verify, not that they're not being done anywhere.
Right.
But basically coming up with a skill sheet that says you've done these things and you've done them to the, what the standard says and somebody's signing off on that essentially. Because that's, ultimately, that's what it all boils down to, is we're able to, to say whether we randomized testing or we do a hundred percent testing is that they were trained on a hundred percent of it and the, the testing came from a randomization of a hundred percent of the skills or they did a hundred percent of it.
So my suggestion is that we try to fix this, reevaluate it a year. And then let's go from there. Cause I, I, I don't want to take away.
I don't either certifications or anybody either.
But, you know, I do see that we need to fix it and figure out how we need to go from there. And like you said, reach out to forestry and see if we can, there might be a partnership that we can do or something that might make this a little easier too and more streamlined. So that's just my suggestion that, that's what we do.
So do we leave these classes that are upcoming open for those people to?
Well, here's the deal. In chapter four. Yeah. It, it states that every certification that we offer has a practical portion and has a written component. So at that point, what does it look like? So now here's the homework assignment you have. What does the J P R practical evaluation look like that we can push out? Can we have that done? And if so, how quick can we have that done? Because it's already covered in rules that it has to have this plus this. So now it's internal. What do you need to do to fix it?
Because like at our department, they're teaching to whatever's there now. They're not teaching the old curriculum. They're teaching the current curriculum and expecting the new test that should have come out on July one. Now, whether the JPRs are up to date, I can't answer that without looking at them individually or talking to Mr. Palmer or whatever. But I can tell you from the written side of the house, the book that they're using currently is the one of the current edition and they are using the test questions at the end of each chapter that is the current edition.
So question, because it's already gone through one validation, all it has to go through is J P R uh, validation and then a practical evaluation sheet needs to be formulated. Is this something that can be done in forty-five days?
Absolutely.
Done. Okay. Are we ready to move on? Anything else?
Chairman Scott, I just wanted to give the commission, I, I know Jason Sparks mentioned a meeting that we had with the Department of Ag Division of Forestry, to kind of tell you a little bit about what that meeting was. They, they came to us first and gave us very informative presentation on how vulnerable Tennessee is to wildland fires, not just the, the big fire we had several years ago, but how vulnerable we are and how many of these wildland fires that we have. And they are gonna be seeking funding separate from their, their, their normal funding to bring more training to volunteers firefighters in this state to fight wild, wildland fires. So it's kind of, kind of separate. Y'all, y'all probably know in a lot of states, the Fire Marshal's office is in charge of wildland firefighting, but Tennessee is the Department of Ag Division of Forestry. And so they're, they're gonna be seeking funding and looking to coordinate with us mainly from a perspective of, of communicating to the volunteer firemen. And they didn't get into specifics about what this training would look like, but if, you know, who knows, it may be utilizing this class we're talking about right now. But they are interested in bringing that, that training statewide to the volunteer firefighters.
That, that's great to hear because we have a lot of great organizations in the state that we should be partnering with that we just, for, for one reason or another, it just hasn't been able to materialize. So that is, that's great news to hear. So is there anything else for?
One more, one more question. I know you guys find that hard to believe. With the practicals that have already been completed by these people with this wildland, is there a way that we can extend those for a year so that they're still valid? Because they're the JPRs that were there when they took the class and they did their certification and they're two in their written test. I realized that they would still have to complete the written side of this and we're saying forty-five days for you to. Get that test on board, which would be able to put something out there, but. So am I hearing this in a motion to add an agenda item under new business?
Yes, please.
That would be letter K?
Is that possible? Legally from there.
So from the from the accrediting bodies standpoint. The standard should have changed two years ago. Two years ago, we could have got a one-year extension. We're a year past where we would have been been able to get an extension. Now, what I would say, what's in place. It's been what we've been doing. I would say. Let it ride and we'll, but we gotta fix it, right? It's not a matter of saying we're gonna let it ride and.
Let me ask you this, you're just talking the practical section.
Absolutely.
See. The new JPRs and the old and see if they mesh.
Absolutely. That's easy, but. If if nothing has changed in the standard, then nothing's changed other than the date on the addition.
And you could have that potentially in forty-five days. So basically what we're looking at with all this would be. Are the JPRs there? If so, we could extend that for the JPR and then we could, in essence. Be administering the new written examinations.
Yes, okay.
But if they have changed, they'll have to do a new practical.
And that would be absolutely accepted. But at this point, we don't need to. No, not until he comes back in thirty-five days.
Okay. I mean, that's that's a fairly easy lift from from my standpoint. I can get that to you well in advance of forty-five days.
And thank you. I'm not, again, I would do this if it was. This gentleman's department or that gentleman's department. I'm not just doing it because we, but we've got people. Do this class, so I don't want them to fall short and I want to be able to give everybody the opportunity across the state. That's why I said if there's people that already have packets submitted, we don't need to cuff their hands and tell them they can't do it.
And nothing that I have brought before is is an attempt to get rid of anything.
No, I don't believe that.
I want, we, there's eighty-some odd levels of accreditation out there. If we want to be accredited to all eighty levels, that's fantastic. But from my standpoint, as the voice of the paper, of the process, I'm just here to make sure we're doing it right. So that's all I, that's that's all I'm doing. So. Christian Green, do you have a question?
No, you have my question for me.
We good?
So the last thing, well, he brought up the book thing, so I've I got a question on that, but the last thing as far as everything goes, online training. The only thing I want to point out, one is when you authorize people to do that online, you lose control of what's being done. In the sense of you're at their mercy when, as far as third parties, right, third-party vendors and things like that. Um if if there's not the ability to. We talked earlier about the the issue with the frauding of certifications and you have some authority to do something to that individual. If I have a third-party business and I'm in Kentucky, but I'm allowed to do training in Tennessee, what, other than saying, okay, you're done. There's no real authority, right? So you don't have the control over people that aren't necessarily our constituents. From an accreditation standpoint, just being completely honest and and transparent here. I'm not a big fan of it because you do lose that control. You don't have the ability to to say what's going on in the training. As opposed to the training that's happening at your fire departments because. In the sense of you have that ability to say you're not doing it right or that course isn't getting approved because you're not teaching the right material. Just food for thought, putting that putting that out there. So it is a manner of way that we are issuing certifications. And that's where my concern comes into play. If it was just training for the sake of training, but when we're accepting practical skills that are being done online as far as instructor one, for example. If if I can submit to you online a recording of me doing a presentation, there's there's. Part of the online piece when it comes to the accrediting bodies is. If I'm watching you in real time, then that's your one shot as if I was sitting in the in front of you. But if I'm recording that, how many times did I hit stop and delete and start over, stop and delete and start over? So while this guy doing it online got fifty-five tries to get it right, this person that's doing it in front of their training officer got one try to get it right. And it's not necessarily equal across the board. So just putting that out there for consideration and thought, nothing else.
Thank you.
You and this, you can tell me if this isn't the right opportunity. You brought the book committee. Is there an opportunity to kind of revisit that or to go back into that, to look at that? Um from the standpoint of that's where a lot of the value for the fire service has on the buy-in. If they're able to decide what books we're using and to decide what the programs look like and things in that sense.
Mr. Palmer, I'll just, sure, as being a part of that committee, I'll say, how much more do you want on your plate, sir? We'll we'll load it right up for you to sit down. We'll be more than happy. I mean, this, I'll tell you what happened. Initially, we met in person just like this. And then we started having teams meetings and then gradually those teams meetings because we had a plan, we had an actual. And I don't know if you've even received a copy of it, but there was an actual copy of and we presented it to the commission. These are the books that we recommend. Like we took. You know, I'll just use firefighter one and had like Pro Board, IF SAC, like the test bank was like fifteen hundred or eighteen hundred questions. It was banana. Um and we'd said no one book. So we absolutely, yeah, we'll put it, yeah, we can all meet again, we can try to figure out. And if there's not enough people, um because I know like one of the, one of the outside persons of the Assistant Chief at Mount Juliet. Mr. Edwards, he's on that, but we haven't had a teams or anything like that with him in forever, but I would most definitely be able to. Especially now with your expertise in this and you're sitting down and you're showing us, no, we can't do that because of Pro Board, we can't do that because of IF SAC. One hundred percent because these are not things that we were told before and that's where I wanted. I take full responsibility of not knowing, but um now I want to know because I want to make it better for the firefighters in Tennessee. So.
So my only concern with, from what I've heard, how the the textbook committee has been done is it's been one committee picking all of the books. Using myself as an example, I did twenty years as an airport firefighter. I know airport firefighting. I do not know technical rescuer. I would not be a good person to pick a technical rescuer book.
So I'll expand on that just a little bit. There was a survey sent out to like the big departments and stuff, Memphis, Chattanooga and smaller departments if. It would be the will of your agency to, as the accreditation people to say, no, we need to send it out to every department we have on. Now, that's when that survey comes back and we get all those numbers, we gotta sit down and sift through them. Okay, because if now, over the last few years, they've decided that Jones and Bartlett is not the greatest for firefighter one, that actually Ista is or vice versa in another. Certification, I'm fine with that, just to understand that that's. That's a lot, that's a lot of information to take in from the outside and we weren't trying to downplay any department or upplay it. We weren't. We were just trying to do what we had with what we were presented at the time by the, at the time present. Um accreditation manager who was the helm of this. So but obviously there are some pieces that we didn't um. We didn't get all the pieces to the puzzle. All right, thanks, sir. Sounds like a good conversation to have later. Okay, so moving on, Chief Sparks, would you like to talk about intermediate?
Yes, sir. Thank you. So I have submitted a curriculum. That is intermediate pop-ups, but simply taking from our existing PDO curriculums already approved. The intent is to to land somewhere between intro to pumps and a full PDO class. So what we're gonna do is uh, it doesn't say that on what you have, I've amended to what I'm calling, so. Uh we're gonna pre-rig intro to pumps.
I was actually, that was gonna be my my question for you was, are we gonna pre-rack that? Because when I started reading this. I've sent numerous people to advanced pumps and so I kind of looked at this as the the trifecta, if you will. Intro, intermediate, advanced, outside of the PDO aspect.
Yeah, so what, the intent is to make it, uh there's a lot of military fire departments. That it's sort of. How prohibitive to do a right PDO class and uh so our intent is with this to sort of land somewhere in the middle. Make intro pumps to minimize this classroom pump. And then most of the PDO field we will cover in this class, we'll probably do a day of review and then we will. The rest of the time will be skills-based. And so that's that's our intent. Again, we're using the same curriculum that we already have. We're just looking to to do something. We had a lot of uh folks ask us. You know, do you have something somewhere in the middle?
Right.
So this is our intent to to try and fix what some folks see as a as an issue that they have.
I agree. Any questions for Chief Sparks? Hearing none, moving on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have Mr. House right here from UT Center? No.
Is he online?
Ms. Laura, is he online by chance?
No, okay. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Have you had a chance to review the structural collapse and machinery rescue courses? Any questions?
No, they all just provide good stuff.
All right, hearing none, moving on. Fire engineering courses. There's pretty much all of them are one hour long except for what, three, four, one is uh two hours. The other three are ninety-minute and then the rest are sixty.
Yeah, one, two forty.
Yeah. Is there a two forty?
Yeah, on the second tab down to five minutes.
Oh, that's where I missed. Basic Incident Command System for Initial Response, IS two hundred. Any questions concerning those? Hearing done, moving forward. Vector solution courses. Looks like. I may be wrong. Was it only the CPR academic that was included?
That's all, that's all.
That's all I saw too. And I see that they referenced AHA all over there. Any questions? Hearing none, moving forward. The Tennessee Fire Chiefs Association and Southeastern Association of Fire Chiefs Conference Course. This was requested by Chief Biggs. And I could tell you by going to this, it was a very, very good conference. A lot of good speakers and and topics. I think the highlight of the week was sitting with Gary Sinise and listening to him how he formed his foundation. Any questions concerning the conference, request approval? Hearing none, moving forward. We brought, brings us to National Fire Department, Mr. Young.
Best is, and some of it's been touched on already, and I appreciate the thought. Of the sixteen hours, that's gonna help us tremendously, um including the law enforcement training line service. But I do want to go over and expand some of what's going on in the state. So you've got origin cause investigators, you've got our investigators that carry a duty weapon for self-defense. And then you've got investigators that have full police powers, full arrest powers, search warrants, subpoenas, the whole nine yards. So for us, we have to do forty hours post. We're also doing forty hours at the fire department. So. We would like to be able to expand on those numbers for the full-time law enforcement officers that are in the fire service. And because this is extremely important for us, one, to get use of force training, to get new law updates, constitutional rights. Uh search warrant training, um a bunch of laws were just passed on juveniles, um how we interact with juveniles. All this stuff is extremely important for our job and our job functions. And how we get these abilities is through the Tennessee Code annotated. Those powers are in the state law. So at any time, any department can say. Hey, we want you to have full powers. Well, that training is needed. For the investigator and for the people in the state. So we would like to request for full-time law enforcement investigators and however that's labeled, and I know I'm a. A little bit to Investigator Armstrong, he runs our Catus portion. And I know we have, we're labeled as our investigators full-time, but we also have a second designation that says full-time law enforcement. Uh in a Catus, and so I don't know if that's how we can differentiate the two. But if we could add hours for those individuals. Because it is extremely important that we get those hours for our own protection and for the protection of the people. And to do our jobs, how the state has allowed us, the powers that they have given us to do. And our job, our job functions within the National Fire Department. Uh Memphis is also fully post-certified. Uh and I know there's some other outliers that that have it, but as far as departments, that this is a requirement in the department. Nashville and Memphis, um we have spoken to other larger municipalities that are trying to tread that way. Because it's the safest thing for their investigators. So this is extremely important to us, keep us safe, the community safe, and help us out on hours. So and even if it's not the full forty, because I I do understand where you came from when you said, you know, fire and police. But if we could just get a little bit more to help us. With training, because we still need to upkeep our fire investigative training to comply with ten thirty-three, so we've still got that. Um a lot of the guys have their M T certification. Um so there's a lot of certifications that fire investigation. Maintain, that's a lot of training. This would be a huge help for us.
So help me understand, because some of the questions as I read this was, what is, what is it that you're actually asking for? Um Commissioner Henry brought up, why do we, why did we limit it to sixteen hours? Why don't we look at doing twenty hours? So that's something that we will address when it comes time for the rule hearing in public comment. We can make those changes and then submit it for the rule. Um and as you heard me say earlier, N T C A, post has their forty hours for eight hundred dollars for law enforcement. EMS now has their stipend. And then, of course, the fire department has theirs. And so. As it coming from the fire commission, it has to be fire-based. Now. You may do a hundred and twenty hours of training a year and that may be on the low end as an investigator, right? But between those hundred and twenty hours, how much is of it, how much of that is actually fire-based? So you have to keep up your skills with ten thirty-three, right?
Yes.
And that's fire-based. How many hours do you spend on those classes?
So out of the posts for like out of our post.
Just in general.
I would say, so in in my, this is my opinion, I would say all of them, and the reason I say all of them is because. Fire investigation is is a part of the fire service.
Right.
Investigating that fire and understanding when you need to get a search warrant, that is still to do with the fire. Everything, the the weapon that that we carry is for the self-defense so that we can investigate that fire. Everything has to do with that fire, right? The only reason we're there is for the fire. So every bit of the training that we receive is to better ourselves, protect ourselves, protect the constituents, protect the homeowner. Or the suspect, victim, whoever it may be. Every bit of that training that we receive. Is fire, is for fire, even though I know, you know, oh, it's police training, it's police training. I I understand that it says police and it says fire. I I I understand that these are two different worlds. But when you, when the fire service takes on fire investigations, you are mending those worlds. And it is all applicable to everyday fire that we do. It's one hundred percent applicable. And that, again, I'm gonna say that is my opinion, and but I believe that is also the opinion of Memphis. And other departments that are pushing for this, that are pushing to become post-certified, that are pushing for more training for their guys. Um where I'm put in safe situations.
I I I guess I'm just, I'm confused because. For education and center, because that's what this is for, right? It's forty hours for a full-time firefighter?
Yes.
Okay. And. Are you not doing at least forty hours of fire training? Before we get into the law and the warrants and the uh probable cause or, you know, any of that?
Yeah, so we're doing forty hours of in-service with National Department, a minimum of forty hours. Yeah, so we're doing forty hours of in-service with National Department, a minimum of forty hours.
Right.
And then we're doing our forty hours at minimum with the police department.
Right.
Um, that's before we touch any investigative training. Um, we get our training from I W A I and TAC every year, so we'll send half the group to each conference.
Uh, which we approve those courses?
Yes, and it boasts us to, it, it, Post also approves all those hours. The issue is we can't get paid out of, through Post, even though we're submitting, we can't get paid out of.
Right, because T C A law states, there's, there's one loophole. And what that loophole is, is a police officer who is a volunteer fireman can get both. But because you don't have that component on the law enforcement side for a reserve officer to receive it, if they were a full-time fireman, they're, they're out of luck.
Right.
So that one caveat, that one little loophole that does exist, um, I, I guess I'm, I'm.
So basically, I'm just asking for, and I know, and again, thank y'all for even adding it, because it's a huge help. Just asking for a little bit more for the individuals that are taking on this responsibility and are charged to perform these duties. If, if we could request more hours to be applied to that, uh, would help us out tremendously.
And you're asking for the hours to be applied to the fire side?
Yes.
Okay, if you're going to the I double A con, I double A conference and this other cop, uh, TACA conference, I double A conference is forty hours.
It's usually thirty-five, and then TAC, I think TAC this year was seventeen, sixteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, somewhere in those. Sixteen, eighteen hours. Um, so if, if, if we're looking at sixteen, that's approved now, or sixteen, there, we still fall short, but now I double A, yes, I unfortunately, um, National Fire Department and I'm sure other jurisdictions, I cannot, uh, place our whole unit out of service and send everyone to Gatlinburg for that week.
I'm confused. That's, that's why I'm, I'm trying to figure out where the, where this is going, because.
Let's say, not to interrupt.
No.
I think I understand what you're asking, so let's say you do twenty hours of training with Post. That way you'll only have to do twenty hours with National Fire. So you're still getting your forty, it's just half is coming from here and half is coming from there.
We are just asking to subs, to be able to add a substitute form when, when we submit for end-of-year hours.
Which is specialized training on the substitution form.
And it'd be allowed for more than the currently approved sixteen hours is for.
Which is under specialized training on the substitution, correct? Okay, I guess that's where I was confused, because.
Only because I come from that department, I do know that Nashville is they, they are, they try to shy away from substitution forms, so that may be something that we need to, y'all need to speak from your other internal.
The last year we did, um, submit some substitution, substitution forms, um, from I double A, TAC, um. So I, I think it's evolving, you know. But it is new to us. But it would just be the hope so we can be able to submit as a substitution under specialized training and gain a little bit more credit than the sixteen hours.
Well.
That, the, the substitution's not being used for the Post side as well, or is it being used for the Post side as well?
Currently it's not being used.
Do y'all just start getting one E I P you're not getting from?
Yeah, they can't get.
Yeah, well.
They can't, they can't.
This would be if, if everything. And I, and I guess since it's already approved, so like this year, we would submit, I think we did forty-six hours through M N P D. We'd submit those forty-six hours, knowing that we're only getting sixteen hours of credit for it, and then the additional training from the National Department. But if we could add hours, if we could gain some hours from it, then we would need, you know, twelve hours from the National Department and over, ten hours from the National Department.
Essentially, it sounds like it needs to go to the October rule making hearing, if that's what we do, to disc, open it for discussion like you were talking.
To up it from sixteen to twenty hours, but it also sounds like it's an internal issue where the department's not utilizing the substitution to its fullest extent.
So, so that I probably couldn't speak on, because I don't really know, so I'm we came into this unit, you know, three, four years ago, and we have pushed to become post-certified, we achieved that, and so this is a lot, a lot of this is new to us.
Right.
Um, because we, you know, we're done with Post, talking with Post, and supposedly, yeah, ten years ago, mostly, yeah, the fire commission, and and talked, and it was kinda shut down, and so now we're back, um, to the table of, can we just get some kind of help, and the sixteen hours is a huge help, I wasn't expecting that, so that, that's a huge help. Um, but so now it would just be, is it possible for the individuals that are full-time law enforcement, that this is a hundred percent applicable to their job? Can we just up that number? And if, and I don't know, like you said, if it's in October or if up that number can be decided.
So where, where we're at right now is when we actually start our business meeting, um, it's gonna be the will of the commission on whether we're ready to push the rule package forward to internal review, which then it goes to legal for all of the I's dotted, T's crossed, and then it will come back to us approximately. So. Because what happens is internal review, and then it gets filed, or we have the rule hearing, and then it gets filed. So. Hopefully before December.
Yeah.
Right, um, we'll be able to have the public comment on the, on that rule piece, and then at that point, then, um, we can go ahead unless we can make a motion in our business meeting to make that one change in front of the commission now for that sixteen to twenty. Well, yeah, it's already open, so I mean, it, and it's a matter of just changing, changing the sixteen to twenty, so that's something we could address today. Okay.
And make a motion added, I don't care.
Okay, back in. I have a motion, I have a second. Motion by Commissioner Boatwright, second by Commissioner Henry.
Yeah, well, we can just go ahead and fix it now and end it.
Okay. All right, we have gone through all new business.
Motion to adjourn.
Whoa. Slow down.
Yep, dude.
Slow down. At this time during the work session, if there's any public comment that would like to be added before we talk about our next bit, uh, our next meeting dates. Anything from online, Ms. Laura? Hearing none, we close public comment? Let's talk next mission meeting.
Do we have?
Yes. Calendar's out. I think, uh, somebody had mentioned earlier, maybe being back in middle Tennessee again for the next meeting? Thoughts and feelings?
Do it at.
Whatever.
I can do anything but the sixth through the tenth, what month, you know, in October.
Are we in October?
Yes.
No, I can do anything after the thirteenth.
After the thirteenth, you said? Me too, yeah, that'd be great.
Is a
If we do.
About the fourteenth, yeah.
Travel down the thirteenth.
Yeah.
Uh, I can't do fourteenth, it's a board meeting day. I could do fifteen, sixteen.
Four, sixteen.
I can do sixteen.
How about sixteen, seventeen?
No, I'm out.
Yeah.
Up to twenty-first and the twenty-second.
Uh, uh, Fire Chiefs. I can't be here for that. How about that?
I'm good with twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, I'm good with twenty-eight.
Twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Can do that.
Look good, and are we doing, what are we doing on the twenty-seventh, a work session?
Travel.
Or travel, and then we're doing a work session on the twenty-eighth and a meeting the twenty?
So the twenty-eighth, we, uh, Homer and myself will be in Lexington, Kentucky, Kentucky for the IFSEC conference.
When do you come back from that, ma'am?
We should be back the thirtieth.
So let's move it into November third, fourth?
Middle Tennessee, is that where you're staying?
Middle Tennessee.
It is.
That'll work.
I can do the fourth.
I can do the fourth.
Travel the third, go into the fourth.
Travel third, then nine AM work session followed by meeting on the fourth?
On the fourth, yeah.
November third, fourth? And location to be determined? But it's middle Tennessee. Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
So that, that's a question that I also wanted to ask. Having the work session the day before and the business meeting the next morning, or doing it in the same format where we're knocking it all out in one day?
I like it all in one day.
Okay.
It allows people to be here for, that's easier on them.
I agree.
So Chief did bring up a good point, so the fourth is election day, is that gonna matter to anybody? I early vote, so I don't mind.
I early vote, yeah, don't bother me.
Okay.
Everyone good with it?
Yeah.
All right, that's.
So I'm doing the third.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would do it the afternoon of the third.
Do maybe at one o'clock, that way people? No?
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock. Yeah, because it's, if we're coming back here, it's, it's four hours and something for us.
Two o'clock.
Is this considered middle?
Yeah, it's considered middle Tennessee.
Two o'clock on the third.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, I, I.
It would be a middle Tennessee.
Right, he said, but he, they were mentioning, saying something about whether we're coming back to this physical location. We, we may reach out to other constituents and see if we can find other avenues of use, whether it be at T PACA or another host of the department.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
Better.
So if we do the hearing, it'll be the third at two P M.
They'll do that, try back up there. I don't know if it's me, but I would do. I'll take the rest of the week.
Chief Sparks, will you check on T PACA?
T PACA, can you check for those days?
If not, Ms. Mayor, is it feasible for two o'clock on the fourth?
And we'll do them same day.
There's a responding card.
Yes. Right, okay. We could tentatively schedule a hearing for that day based on availability, and if not, then it's a travel day. So, okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Excellent, thank you. All right. Time is eleven forty-five. Calling the work session closed. We're gonna take a fifteen-minute break and we'll start on the business meeting.
Five-minute break, let's go.
Five minutes.
We need to pick up.
Starting. We're gonna start with a prayer. And I've asked Commissioner Green to go ahead and say the prayer.
Let's go ahead and stand, please. Our loving and gracious heavenly Father, uh, we're thankful for this day, Lord, we're thankful for this great state that we serve, Lord, and we get the opportunity to protect others and just use our skills wisely. Lord, we just ask you to be with this commission as we move forward today with business, as we do what's best at the will for the state of Tennessee and the citizens of it. Lord, we just ask you to be with everyone here in attendance, we ask you that you watch over them as they return back to their loved ones and keep them safe, Lord, and just let us do all things that glorify you, we love you, Lord, amen.
Amen. Commissioner Solomon?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the very.
Thank you. Director Paul?
Mr. Hamm?
Here.
Mr. Boatright?
Here.
Mr. Cobb? Mr. Green?
Here.
Mr. Henry?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Scott?
Here.
Mr. Solomon?
Here.
Mr. Windrow? Chairman, you have a call.
Thank you, Director. Everyone had a chance to review the minute, meeting minutes from March twelfth?
I make a motion to approve minutes from March twelfth.
I have a motion by Commissioner Solomon. And a second by Commissioner Green. Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? I've had it. Okay, moving on to announcements. We have any announcements? Hearing none, moving forward. If I could have the guest list brought up, please? Thank you. I have multiple names on the guest list. Anyone?
I said Nashville's the only one.
Yeah, I have Nashville, I have Chief Nash, uh, Wood. Sylar, Bedford.
They all click now.
Okay.
So we're good.
Just Nashville.
Yep, just Nashville.
Right.
And we've already talked to them.
All right, nobody coming before? All right, let's go into communications, start with West Tennessee Regional Coordinator, Oldman?
Uh, everything in West Tennessee is just business as usual, spent a lot of time in the field, meeting with training officers and chiefs and individual firefighters, uh, really pushing West Tennessee to get on these teams meetings for the commission meetings, the, uh, subcommittees, uh, every time I talk to people, even this morning, I started sending out text messages, I hear you on this meeting, just really pushing West Tennessee to be more involved in the meetings and in the fire service as a whole in West Tennessee, uh, other than that, just business as usual.
Thank you. Any questions for, for Nater Oldman? Hearing none, moving on. It is Coordinator Morel. Would you like to give a report?
Good morning Chairman and Board members, uh, first off, let me apologize for not being present today, I am on my way to Knoxville for a, uh, State Town Hall meeting, hopefully you're able to hear me okay. Uh, I do have just a few brief updates to share with you today, uh, first off, we have a new field representative in East Tennessee, Max Bear, and I'm sure many of you will meet him, uh, as he starts heading out to the departments and giving tests, and we're excited to have him onboard. All the Proctors in East Tennessee have been audited this quarter and they're all continuing to do a good job administering our exams. Myself, Commissioner Boatright, and Commissioner Solomon have completed all EFP audits for East Tennessee for twenty twenty-four, and, uh, believe that's already on the agenda, uh, under new business. Then lastly, I just have a couple of quick statistics to share with you since, uh, our last meeting in April, I have issued sixty-four practical exams, I have graded seventy-five successful practical projects, forty-six admissions for course approvals have been approved, and out of those, uh, six were for the Dustin Samples Act. I, uh, Commissioner Scott, in the last meeting, you had asked about Commission One-O-One classes, I just wanted to report since, uh, over the last three months, I've taught one Commission One-O-One course, and I've got another one scheduled in two weeks. So unless anybody has any questions for me, that's all that I have to report.
Fine, thank you for that update. Any questions? Hearing none, moving forward. Middle Tennessee Coordinator Bradley.
Um, in Middle Tennessee, we have been conduct, we've conducted at least three Commission One-O-One exams, we've also scheduled a very big Commission One-O-One, uh, not exam, but a presentation, we're doing a very big one tomorrow with the Academy, which will be presented by Director Zimmerman, um, so that's kind of been our push with the Governor's Initiative, we've been utilizing the Commission One-O Ones and the roster updates to get out there and meet these departments, I've personally been to fifteen volunteer departments, uh, probably since our last meeting, um, and we're continuing to push that, and we're just trying to get our foot in the door and trying to get the message out as far as education and incentive pay. Um, other than that, it's just business as usual, uh, you know, we're grading practicals, I got fifteen in my inbox right now, we're just, we're rocking along and just doing the best we can, but again, the big, the big thing is these Commission One-O Ones, we're getting out there just trying to get our message out there, so, and tomorrow's a big one, so if anybody's listening online, like tomorrow's gonna be the day to be there. And that's all I have, anybody have any questions?
Are you serving lunch? That was a joke.
That's a question for the Director.
Any questions for Coordinator Bradley? Hearing none, moving forward. Coordination Manager Palmer? You got thirty seconds. I'm kidding.
Good afternoon now, um, just kind of working through things, a lot of stuff, obviously, we've talked about this morning, trying to get the, the programs, uh, that are on the hook, updated, right? Ten thirty is the next program, and it is due to be implemented by December thirty-first of this year, ten thirty being the Fire and Life Safety Educator, uh, the Plans Reviewer and the Investigator Programs, so we're working through those. From a standpoint of the plans review, um, neither one of the main publishers have a test bank, so we will have to create an entire test bank from scratch for that particular program, so that's kind of the big undertaking for ten thirty. Um, and one thing, uh, and I apologize, first time, still figuring things out, but this morning with the ARF stuff, um, I would like to request, uh, that the commission do something in regards to the ARF program specifically, um, with the discrepancies that we talked about, um, that particular program is aware of it not being done correctly, uh, to the extent of being outside of our state. Um, one of the accreditation managers from another state has reached out asking about how we're doing that, and that, uh, they're aware that, for lack of a better term, that some skills are not being done the way that they're supposed to be done, it's being signed off on, it's being sent to us, we're issuing a certification, and then they're turning around and, and basically getting reciprocity, uh, for, based off of our certification, and so in that, in that context, um, from a standpoint of whether it be posit, do whatever, but we need to do something where it's not act, an active program right this second for us to be able to fix it and get it right, so we're not making things worse than it already is, so I apologize for not bringing that up this morning. Um, it came up during the conversation on the break, but that's the summary of, of things from the accreditation world, thank you, uh, any questions by all means?
Uh, I just appreciate your good work that you're doing, and just please keep doing it.
Happily, gladly. Welcome, sir. Thank you.
No other questions? Thank you. Moving on. Chief Sparks?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, from the Fire Academy, we'll be starting a recruit class on August eleventh, and, uh, kind of unusual, but we have seven open slots right now in that class, if anybody has, uh, personnel that they need in a recruit class. Uh, Fire Chief Orientation Schedule, so we have one upcoming in September here in Cookeville, uh, that is at Upper Cumberland Training Weekend, and then the very next weekend at Tennessee Firemen's Association Annual Conference in Jackson, Tennessee, and that is September twenty-seven, twenty-eight, that is, uh, those are the last two for this year. Our new ninety-five foot mid-mout area that's on order is scheduled to be delivered sometime in January, and that'll be, of course, replacing our original, uh, hundred-foot ladder at the Academy, a residential burn prop, so it's really finished, well, it is finished, however, uh, in the process of that, we, we have a, uh, underground gas leak in the feed line for that building, so we're working through state procurement to get that repaired, so that we can get that building up and running. And, uh, that is the last thing I have to report, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any question for Director Sparks?
I just have one, are we still doing pilot testing for, um, fire one and two or whatever as far as using the computers at the Academy?
No, sir.
Okay.
My understanding, well, of course, Director Zimmerman elaborated on that, that's sort of been suspended at the moment.
Yes, sir, okay.
Thank you. Moving on, legal report?
Regarding possible certification fraud, we believe an individual has falsified approximately four certification documents, two of which would have been turned into the commission, um, that would include a firefighter two and a fire instructor, um, certification, um, the firefighter two certification has been decertified, but the fire instructor certification is still, um, on his ACADIS account. We also believe that the HMA and HMO, uh, certification, or an HMO certification from two thousand and four, um, had an ACADIS, or I'm sorry, a IFSEC number that was accredited to another individual. Um, after reviewing all of his ACADIS accounts, um, the current status is that he has an active live burn that was rightfully acquired, as well as a re, more recent HMA and HMO from twenty nineteen that was rightfully acquired. When his agent, when his department terminated him, it turned out that he also had physical copies of a fire officer one and fire officer two certification that, uh, appeared to be forged, and he admitted that he was not in fact certified to fire officer one and two. Um, for these reasons, we do believe that, uh, this individual has, has fraudulently created certifications for himself, um, and we recommend, uh, either offering to, uh, cover an agreement with the individual to bar him from the fire service for ten years, including, or bar him from the firefighting commission program for ten years, including testing and educational incentive pay, um, and decertifying any wrongfully of, of acquired certifications, or, um, in the alternative, we recommend filing those appearing charges and having a disciplinary, uh, hearing in front of the commission.
And just, you said you had all documents, and that was including the officer one and others that were fraudulent?
Yes, um, we have, uh, photocopy scans of everything that we believe he has created that's fraudulent.
Okay. What is the will of the commission?
I make a motion that this young man come in front of the commission.
I'll second it.
I have a motion from Commissioner Henry for a hearing. And seconded by Commissioner Solomon. Any discussion? Director, I'm gonna call for a roll call vote on this.
Commissioner Hamm?
Yes.
Commissioner Boatright?
Yes.
Commissioner Cobb? Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Solomon?
Yes.
Commissioner Windrow? Commissioner Windrow? All in favor?
Thank you. So we're gonna go ahead and send notice for in-person hearing? Merve?
Yes, we'll go ahead and track the call with the, um, the commissioner for procedure commission and for the hearing.
And how many days do they have to respond to the notice of hearing?
So we do have to give them approximately thirty days notice, uh, to, to report a hearing. Typically, obviously, typically, when the procedure is, uh, rules, they don't have to file for, they can just, they can't record and pick up your hearing. Uh, so it goes to depend if they hire a attorney and what that procedure works with, um, as far as how they want to move forward. It's pretty informal until that five, once we have that filed, we'll get a schedule order from the judge.
Okay. I have one question for legal. Between the, the date of the hearing and today, one of the things that you mentioned was this person's, has obtained a firefighting one certification, but they also have a fire instructor one certification. But you can't hold the instructor one without firefighter two. So can we suspend all of his certifications until the hearing?
If, if the commission were to make a motion to, um,
Because technically he can, he's holding that. He could say, I can teach until you do something.
If the commission were to make a motion to flag his, um, account on ACADIS, we could say that he's pending a decert, a, some type of, maybe disciplinary hearing.
Okay.
Um, and that way, anybody who wishes to see his account on ACADIS would know that that, we have identified a problem with that certificate. And we could put a flag, like please call the firefighting commission office, um, for any public records regarding.
Do you need a motion for that, ma'am?
I don't think so, just to flag.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion by Commissioner Henry, seconded by Commissioner Green, here to flag this person's ACADIS account.
And until we file that notice, it won't be a public record what his name is. But as soon as we file it, then the office can share the filing from the, from the accusation that our office will.
That's correct. Thank you, Merve. Any other questions?
I know. So you said that his department has released him?
Yes, he's retired.
And his, he's not working with any other department or anything currently looking through or anything?
I bet it means that he's a state or somewhere else, but as far as we can tell on ACADIS, uh, he's not.
Alright. So just throwing this out here. He's been released by his former department now. He still has possible fraudulent Tennessee issued certificate. What's going to stop him from going to Kentucky, to Minnesota, to wherever with those fraudulent certificates in hand? With us only flagging his account?
Nothing.
So.
However, we can't, wi- without a true finding of fact by the commission, I don't think we can take away somebody's um, right to that hearing, basically. We, we can do our best to make everyone within that uses our program aware of the situation. Um, but even if we decertify him, we can certainly get away on that. Nothing can keep anyone from photocopying pieces of paper and going to a state line.
Understate can't look at ACADIS, his account.
Right. But
I'd like to speak on this. So if there comes a point in time where we are going to remove the rightfully acquired certifications, we can reach out to our accrediting bodies, IFSAT and PRO Board and have those numbers removed. So we can go as far as that to be able to remove those, that ability for him to go to another accredited state and require, and acquire that same level of certification.
Alright, so here's concern number one. He got an instructor certification based on fraud. So in my mind, that certificate is Nolan Boyd. Period. Am I thinking incorrect with this?
See, that was the line of question that I was going down. You have to have firefighter two, which we've determined is a falsified document. So technically, how do we not have the ability to revoke his instructor? For not having, for not having the proper.
My concern is we have to prove.
So we have to treat this just like the post would or like the EMS board would. He's innocent until proven guilty.
We have to prove.
Correct, yes, ma'am.
Yep. Am I mistaken? There is no valid firefighter two document across the board with any of our accrediting IFSAT or PRO Board. So because there's not a valid firefighter two certificate, doesn't matter in the ACADIS or in his hands, instructor is automatically Nolan Boyd. Because he lacks the prerequisite for it.
And I think on, on that basis, it would be a policy decision whether you want to go ahead. Or a, a decision by the commission, whether you want to go ahead and pull that for not having the prerequisite. I don't think we can pull it for fraud. I think right now we could possibly pull it for not.
Lack, lack of prerequisite.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
But that would be up, up to you guys, the commission and, and.
Does that need to be amended to the flagging procedure?
Let's, let's do it as a second.
Okay.
Okay. So just go ahead and take the vote on the, or did we?
We did.
So now we're ready for a second motion.
I'll make a motion that, uh, we suspend this gentleman's, um, or take away this gentleman's fire instructor one certification due to.
Let's be clear on the language.
Okay. Take away his fire instructor one certification due to not having the prerequisites needed to have, to hold that certification because they were falsified.
So revoking instructor one for lack of prerequisite?
That is correct, yes, sir.
I'll second that motion.
Alright. Any discussion? Bearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hamm?
Yes.
Commissioner Boatright?
Yes.
Commissioner Cobb? Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Solomon?
Yes.
Commissioner Windrow? Chairman, you have a everyone voted you.
Thank you. Alright. Merve, anything else?
No, Fred, nothing. Fred is unmoved. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Bell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I want to, uh, make another comment about what Director Sparks said about the, um, uh, the, um, residential burn building. We are working with both Commissioner's Office and the Governor's Office to hopefully get the governor there for the ribbon cutting on that. And, and I don't know, I'm, I'm speaking of something I haven't asked the question to yet, but is that something y'all normally come to? Is that something we, we would invite you, I would hope we would invite you to? But let's make sure, uh, we invite, uh, the commissioners to that ribbon cutting, give them plenty of notice that if they'd like to come to the ribbon cutting on that residential burn building, you're able to come to that as well.
We appreciate that.
But we are working with the Governor's Office and the Commissioner's Office and would love to have y'all as well as possible.
Yes, sir.
Be sure and put that on that list, dude.
Um, another thing, I just wanted to, uh, compliment not only the team at the, the, the commission, but also at TFACA and the great job they've been doing. And then lastly, I, I said at the office last, at the, uh, previous meeting that we were at.
This is David.
I appreciate so much all the work y'all have been putting into these rules. I know it's been, it's been a labor of love. And, uh, appreciate all the work y'all have been doing.
Thank you. Excellent. Thank you. Any questions for Commissioner Bell? Bearing none, moving forward. Directors report. Director Zimmerman?
Thank you, Commissioner. So first off, I want to thank the board members for working very diligently with us and getting those, uh, conflict of interest forms back to us so quickly. So again, thank y'all very much for working on that. Um, I want to first start off with talking about the education incentive pay stats for twenty twenty-four. Uh, we ended up paying out six point five million dollars for twenty twenty-four. We had seventy-nine career departments, fifty-four combos and fifty volunteers. Uh, we had six thousand eight hundred ninety-three career firefighters. We had seven hundred and fifty-six paid firefighters from combo. Uh, for the volunteers in the combo was three hundred and sixty-one and volunteer was three hundred and forty-five. So roughly about seven hundred volunteers for twenty twenty-four, which is downs about two hundred or so from the previous year. So we expected that unfortunately with the, um, requirements that were put into play this year as far as the sixteen, the sixty-four and the live burn. But with your help and assistance, we're working on that with the rule changes. So hopefully we'll see those numbers increase over the coming years.
How many departments pro volunteer did you say?
Uh, volunteer department was fifty.
Okay.
Fifty departments. Um, arrest processing stats for twenty twenty-five as of, uh, yesterday was we received a hundred and sixty applications and we have issued four hundred and fifty-six certs with the ACADIS testing. I want to talk on this for a few minutes. Um, so to what Commissioner Henry was asking about earlier about the testing of fire one and fire two and HMA and all that at the TFACA level, we have suspended all online testing until further. Uh, we've got a lot of work to do. Um, the first thing that I want to make you aware of is we are working on a survey that we are going to send out to departments in the near future to just kind of gauge and ga, see what the interest is and who would like to become a hosting department. Um, some of the things that we would want to know is how many devices does the department have? You know, whether it's a actual laptop or is it a physical, um, desktop, things of that nature? Also, we, things we would want to know is how many tests are you going to be able to administer per host per month? Uh, because obviously, uh, last year we had five hundred and fifty-eight test events over the course of twenty twenty-four. Um, and of those, that was almost two hundred different locations. So we, I don't think we're going to be able to manage that as far as online testing, but we didn't want to have a substantial number and try to cover as much geogra, geographical areas we can. Um, so again, we just want to gauge how many people are interested. What devices do you have? How many test events could you potentially hold? Uh, also, could an individual be provided to us with basic IT knowledge? You know, can they help they, can they help us troubleshoot getting logged into the computers, helping us with, uh, online issues and things of that nature? Um, and then lastly is, you know, these tests are going to require a lockdown browser. And so again, we can work with the departments and once we decide on who those testing, testing locations will be. But the lockdown browser would have to be downloaded. It's a one-time download on those devices that would be utilized for those testing events. So again, that's a survey that'll be coming out hopefully in the near future. So, um, we'll send that out via Emma. Um, speaking of, uh,
Before moving on, I had a department in West Tennessee in Bay County asking if iPads would be sufficient in order to use for testing.
That's a great question, um, and I'd be glad to answer that. So when talking with the ACADIS, they do not recommend using iPads. It will work, but the issue they have run into with the iPads is when the student is changing from page to page between questions. Sometimes it will inadvertently change the answer. And so they do not recommend it. Could it be used? Absolutely, but they don't advise it. Um, also with the, the online, the ACADIS testing, again, we're working very closely with them. Um, there, currently there is an office that was working with, uh, that's still there, that was doing the online testing, the pilot program. So we're having to go back and have relearned a lot of that stuff. So just bear with us and be patient with us as we are working through that. Um, also something else I want to make you aware of is if you're not already aware of this, the state Fire Marshal's Office host, holds a, uh, ACADIS site that we share with Post and Toledo. So we are currently working with ACADIS to split that. So the split is projected to happen on eight fifteen. So any of you, if you logged into your account recently, you noticed the banner at the top where they've talked about. Uh, there's going to be some site maintenance and it will be down. And that's what it's about is we are splitting into two entities. So when you go to the landing page that we currently have, you will now see after the fifteen, um, two different boxes and one will read FFC, TFACA, and the other one will read Post and Toledo. And so you will now be able to go into whichever entity that you're looking. So if a fire will work strictly out of the TFACA, FFC, Post and Toledo will access the other one. Um, but again, just kind of mark your calendars for that, kind of update your people, make them aware of that change is coming. Um, it shouldn't affect how you operate and do business as far as your reporting documents and managing your uh, reported training event, things of that nature. Just know that it's going to look different on the front end.
So question on that, now that the, the split's actually going to take place, is there a piece that can be put in to where with, of course, we want everyone to have access to their ACADIS accounts. But is there a toggle switch that we can have into the career uh, firefighters to where it won't allow them to sign up for classes or tests? And it would have to have the approval of their training officer?
That would be something that we would have to talk to the ACADIS about and see if that's even an option available.
Because that, as you know, that's one of the biggest complaints that we do hear across the state is that the training officers don't know when their people in, in their career departments are, are doing things.
I understand. And again, like, that's something that we can investigate. I don't have an answer for that today, though.
Thank you.
I have a question. So for our cross-trained people, we're going to split these things. Are they now going to have to go into two separate accounts to put their stuff in? So if I go to training for IAAI, am I going to have to make sure that it's in on the fireside and the police side to get credit?
Yes.
Are they going to keep the same PSID numbers? Or are they going to be assigned different PSID numbers for Post and then for? Cause I, like, right now, my PSID number is for both, for my Post certification and for my fireside, so.
So from what I understand, um, you're, if you already have a PSID number, you will keep that. But going forward, the Post will get, they will have a whole new number. The TFAC, uh, FFC side, TFACA side, we're going to keep all our burn numbers. So does any, does anybody in here, do you know otherwise? That, that's how I understood.
So anybody after the fifteenth will be getting separate numbers for each discipline, but right now, anybody that's before that is grandfathered and you will, I will keep my one, four, five, five, six.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Can you go in briefly about why we're having to do the split of that, of that area?
Briefly.
Briefly. It was brief.
I mean, we can go into that or y'all feel.
Laura's yours.
So there's a lot of things with ACADIS that are functions that we've not been able to utilize. Um, and so it affects the Toledo side and the fireside. And so by creating this separate entity, they're going to be able to have better control over the functions that are um, more pertinent to them and then likewise for us. And so, uh, one thing, and y'all know that the verification certification, we turned that on for a very brief moment and unfortunately found out that, that affected our Post and Toledo, or Toledo side in a way that they did not expect. And so we immediately turned it off. Uh, so we hope to bring that back, um, after this split. But again, that's one of those features that would help us on the fireside, but they don't want it on their side. And that's respectable. Um, but again, this is something that we have within the state, our marshal office have been pushing for, for a while. And I'm glad to say that if the day is here, that it is as of August fifteenth, that's the day it plans to score. Good news. So, um, a couple more things. Um, the website, um, myself and Laura have been working very diligently on trying to update the website for the fire commission. So if you haven't had a chance to go on there to look at it, please do. Uh, also something else that we're working on is the frequently asked questions. If there's something that you think that you would like to see on there, uh, please let us know. But just know that we are working through that website, trying to clean it up, make it more user-friendly and make it, uh, better for our customers. And then the last thing is, uh, the, uh, phone number for the office. Um, it now is, if you call the main number for the office, there is a phone tree. So it will give you the option to press one for TFACA or two for FFC. So you will not have to call directly to speak to Tina Baker or you can actually go through the phone tree and find those individuals that way. Um, and then I'll throw a soul my thunder on the Commission one-on-one. But we are. But we are hosting and rolling out our new Commission one oh one tomorrow at TFACA at ten o'clock in the morning. So I invite anyone and everyone to come and sit through it with us. Uh, we'll tell you that we took a hundred and fifty uh slide PowerPoint and turned it into ten. So this is going to be a more engaging class. Um, and it is also a class that can be tailored to our audience. So we could actually go out to recruit school if we are invited to teach this Commission one oh one uh to even the recruit level or anybody as far as up to the chief. So again, I invite you or uh if you're not able to attend, please reach out to us at some point and we'll be glad to schedule one. Um, as far as my director's report, that is all that I have.
Sure you're gonna miss anything?
I don't think so. I hope not.
Thank you. So moving on, old business, we had none. So moving on to new business, let's talk audits. East Tennessee performed their audits already for twenty twenty-four. And would you like, guys like to present this as the complete batch or split them between the two since you both participated in them?
Complete batch.
It's just been a complete batch.
All right. You guys want to just give a quick overview?
So I, uh, I did audits on Alcoa, Bradley County, at a Wal, Jacksonboro, La Follette, Vaughnore and Sevier County. Um, no findings I recommend for approval.
And I did audits on Gatlinburg, Spurville, Greenville and Jeff City, and everything was perfect and committed for approval.
All right.
I'll make a motion that we approve them as a batch.
Second. So motion by Commissioner Green, seconded by Commissioner Moore. Any discussion? Hearing done? All in favor?
I.
I had same consideration.
Thank you. One abstinent. All right. EIP, VEP, submit, subcommittee report. Commissioner Green, I believe you wanted to.
I can. So we met yesterday uh here in Putnam County and had a short meeting. So we've now covered all three grand divisions with this subcommittee and heard from everyone about the good, the bad, the ugly of the VEP. And so we're ready to close out the subcommittee and then uh move this over to a rules hearing. So that way we can try to slimline, uh, make this easier for the volunteer departments to get their in-service pay. So unless somebody's got questions, I'll, I'll make a motion. Has anybody got questions about the subcommittee?
Hearing done?
Second.
So I'll make a motion to move, to close the subcommittee and move on to a rules hearing with this.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Hearing done? What about?
Sir. Everybody wants?
Yays.
They have it.
Yeah, I just had a brain fart, sorry.
All those in favor, sir?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing done? Ayes got it. Sorry.
I wondered what happened there.
Yeah, I think I was stroking out there.
I'm beautiful.
Yeah. So let's go into the rules subcommittee report. As you guys saw, we covered the uh rule changes earlier during the work session and we got pretty radical. Uh, I do not need to make a motion for any changes right now. We just need to make a motion to move forward, correct?
Yeah, just to to close the subcommittee and move forward with the rule making.
Right. Correct. So before we make the motion to close, we would like to make a change in chapter seven for fire investigator hours and make that from sixteen hours to twenty hours?
So just to be clear, right now it says uh like EMT and law enforcement. We're just taking that sixteen, turning it into a twenty.
Yes.
And that was the motion.
Yeah. Correct.
I'll second that motion.
It's not a motion yet.
I thought you might have.
No, no, no. It, it's, we're making the change right now before we make the motion to close the subcommittee to then move it forward.
Would we just do that as an amendment to the motion to close the subcommittee?
Sure.
I make a motion to close the subcommittee.
If I have a second, I'll say it. Any discussion?
Yes, I make a motion for an amendment uh to the chapter seven rule from sixteen to twenty for EMS alone for us.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Uh, any opposed? Hearing done? All right. I'm back on track.
I hope so.
Yeah. All right. Moving forward. Accreditation manager Greg Palmer. You wouldn't speak anymore?
I can answer any questions that maybe he had. Um, state programs, the programs we spoke about or any of the concerns that were addressed this morning.
So, so one concern that we did not talk about was what you brought up a while ago about ARF. So basically, let's talk about that for, so from what I'm understanding, people outside of the state of Tennessee are pretty much in like a term, using us as a doormat, just to pencil whip their certification and move on.
So when Commissioner Henry talked to you about the issue with Fort Campbell's, you didn't really, you just said that it would uh, there would be some things that would have to take place between us, DOD, IFSEC. Um, let's talk a little bit more why this is a problem.
As, so from the jurisdictional standpoint, when IFSEC accredits the state of Tennessee, that's what we're allowed to teach and train into. So anywhere in Tennessee, the jurisdiction, state borders is fair game for us to teach our programs, to certify our firefighters and to do our thing. When you go into a military installation, that falls under the Department of Defense jurisdiction. We no longer have the authority to just go on this. I could go on an installation right now as a retired man. That doesn't allow me to go onto that installation and teach Tennessee's certification programs. Just like I couldn't go into Kentucky or North Carolina or Mississippi or California or any other state that has a jurisdictional boundary to it and accredited to teach certifications. The process essentially is we have to come up with an agreement between the state of Tennessee, Department of Defense, and then IFSEC ultimately has the say-so of giving the thumbs up or not, the administration side of uh IFSEC. If everything, all is good and everything is okay, then we're allowed to do it. Um, it's not a process that's hard and it's not a process uh that's impossible to do. It's just a matter of, it's got to be done. And ha- coming from North Carolina and having already worked through this process with the Department of Defense and knowing their accreditation manager as well as I do, uh, it's basically they need the dates, the times, who's teaching, who's proctoring, the name of the DOD students that are going to be in the class and, and basically the location of where it's going to be held at. And then it goes through the channels, it gets signed off, it gets blessed, and then IFSEC gives the thumbs up and then we're allowed to do that.
Now, is Fort Campbell the only place that's doing ARF?
From my understanding, it's the main place. I won't say the only place, especially not having uh, you know, having seen the different training facilities around the state to know. Um, but from my understanding, it's the main place. And what, I don't have my sheet in front of me, but the numbers are are very low.
Yeah.
As far as certifications go anyways with that particular program, because it's my understanding that there's, if there is anywhere else out there, I know that as far as like the commission and whatnot, there's not the ability to, to test for ARF. The, there's not the facility, the trainer to be able to do the practical skills as required to do. And to do it on the, on the military installation, we would have to basically ensure that that, whatever it is that they're using has the ability to do all of the, uh, the live fire requirements to, to be able to train for that particular certification.
So when you first brought this up in our previous meeting, uh, I reached out to the fire chief at FedEx and asked how they did things. And they will act, they actually teach the art class in-house, but then because of the lack of facilities, they end up sending their people down to Jackson, Mississippi to do their practical portion of this. And this is not correct because.
Essentially, we're mixing matching delivery agencies or accredited agencies, so to speak. Um, you, you start blurring lines and it's, we're taking other folks' programs as if they're doing it right, if we're doing it right. And you kind of start blurring lines and you get into some of the different, some muddy waters. Uh, because essentially at that point, what's stopping somebody from leaving here and going to somewhere else that's running a shady program? Get, it's got, reverse the roles as to where I explained what they're doing with our ARF program and kind of taking our certification and getting it. Just turn it out the other way around. There's no control over that. Essentially, when somebody takes a class through our training program, it's, they start our program, they finish our program. We've been able to control all of the events of the testing and, and all of the, the processes to get that accreditation, kind of the, the stuff we talked about this morning. And we know that everybody has met the standard and done things the right way before we issue our certification. Then we have no problems with people going other places to get reciprocity if they leave the state of Tennessee.
So what is a proposed fix for this at this time?
A proposed fix would be, one, we need to figure out how we're doing the practical skills. If we have the ability to do that in the state, then that's great. If we don't, then we really need to look at, is this program something that we are uh in need of? Um, I know, having talked to another state, that a lot of the Nashville folks at BNA are, are leaving Tennessee to go get their ARF the certification anyways. Um, so there's nothing that says folks can't go get where, you know, accredited certification, accredited certification.
And file reciprocity.
Well, if we don't offer it, then there's nothing to give reciprocity for, but we can acknowledge, you know, the AHJ can acknowledge that, yes, while the state of Tennessee doesn't offer instructor three, if I bring an instructor three from the DOD to your fire department, you can, you have the authority to say, well, we'll recognize that kind of a deal. So the same, same concept there. Um, we would definitely need to get in touch with the folks at Fort Campbell and/or any other military installation in the state and kind of allow them to, or make them aware that there is a process. It's not just a matter of us being able to show up and do this. Now, on the flip side of that coin, if, and I don't know the city that's right outside of Fort Campbell, but.
Clarksville.
What's that?
Clarksville.
Clarksville. So if, if we run the class in Clarksville and don't do any testing on the military installation, then folks leave the base and come out to our class, there's no issues because it's technically our jurisdiction at that point. Yes, sir?
That was one of my questions too. Go ahead, ma'am, I'm sorry. Okay.
Acknowledge it.
Oh.
Josh, go ahead.
Josh, did you have something?
Oh, no, that, uh, it was earlier on, um, when we were on the rules, so I'm good now.
It's just Josh.
So I've got, so is, is it a good idea or you, you kind of saying it's a good idea to do it off base? Or if we jump through the hoops to be able to do it on base?
If I had to venture a guess, there's not the facilities to run the actual live fire pieces outside of the base.
Oh, right.
So that kind of takes that off of the table because they would have to go back on the installation and that's where they get into doing the testing. So we would have to go, if we, if we continue with the program, we have to work through the channels of, of getting an MOU in place for every single class that we run on the installation. Um, my, my opinion, and it is what it is, it's an opinion, just throwing it out there, is at least pause the program to fix it because with the, with us not being able to have control over the proctors, because it goes back to that conversation this morning with the in-house practical skills. If we're going to allow other folks to, outside of, of our jurisdiction, to, to basically sign off on practical skills, we need to know what they need to meet to be able to sign off on our practical skills. And until that process is in place, I would recommend pausing the program and then bringing it back online when we're able to do it the right way.
So just to speak to that a little bit, I took that class the year before last. Um, Chief Pete's is a personal friend. He's kind of the one that heads that up. He's getting ready to go out and he's retiring. Um, but a very, very good class. I mean, it was probably one of the better classes that I've taken and the more hands-on classes that I've taken. I mean, it was um to the point that we ended up taking our recruit class there and doing, they done an eight-hour ARF class, not accredited or anything like that, but just for the experience.
Right.
Um, but I, I, I would hate to see us lose that. I mean, you know, it, it's, it was an excellent class. It's very well done.
Never take, sure, not saying anything to discredit.
Right.
The best classes that are out there, period, if they're not falling under what we need them to fall under, then we're giving away stuff that we shouldn't be giving away essentially. So, yes, to that point, by all means, we can work through the avenues. Um, but in the interim, we, we'll be continuing to kind of be a doormat of certifications.
So if we did a pause till end of the year, because I'm looking at your numbers for airport, there's been zero so far this year and ARF, there's only been four. They do that class in September every year. They only do one class a year and it's usually in September.
Okay.
So this is July. Do you have time before September to get this done? Or do we need to put this on pause for till our November meeting?
I would venture to say that it's going to take us coming up with what that process looks like to approve the proctors. And, and if it's at one, if, if, if it's, if we come up with that process and we can go there and, you know, give them the class and do whatever we need to do and we can be up and running, then that's great. Um, if that process uh takes any kind of length of period to come up with what it looks like or there's delays or just whatever reasoning, then obviously that's going to slow what that process looks like.
So go ahead, just, oh, sorry.
I, I'm just asking, I know that it's, so I worked on Fort Campbell when I first got out of the military on the, on the EMS side. And I know that the only reason that place is called Fort Campbell, Kentucky is because the post office is on the Kentucky side of the line. The, the post is literally split in half with the majority of it, well, I shouldn't say split in half. Majority of that post acreage-wise is in Tennessee.
Right, right. Where the problem is.
And, and the.
Where the problem is, it's DOD IFSEC and we're Tennessee IFSEC. That's the problem.
It, Kentucky's not the issue. Where like the geographical, where it lands.
Yeah.
It could be smack dab in the middle of Nashville and all one hundred percent of that installation be inside of the state of Tennessee. But inside that fence line belongs to the Department of Defense and because they're dual accredited, that's, that's where we gotta, we gotta go through the, the rigmarole of every single class.
Has to have an MOU, giving us the permission. And it has to be blessed by IFSEC.
But I can tell you that Alton is the DOD accreditation manager and he's all for this. I mean, he's one guy in Florida trying to manage military installations all around the world. And it's been made clear that if, if the states can help the installations within their states, then by all means do it. But because of the delegation rules within IFSEC, uh, there's, that's where this process comes into play. Because if there's, if there's no rules governing that, then we can go to Mississippi, we can go to Alabama, we can go to Georgia and do whatever we want to. And that's what they're preventing essentially.
So what's the best thing to be, to take place right now is to have the instructor of this course get with you immediately so you guys can start working on an MOU for the September class. So that way we can get this on the oven up.
Yeah, well, from that standpoint, yes, we need to know the dates, times and all the, the information and the students that are going to be involved. When it comes down to, to actually going through it is, it would take me going through Alton, the DOD accreditation manager, and then Alton forwarding it to IFSEC administration for the final, you know, thumbs up.
So if we, if we start working on this, this afternoon or tomorrow?
Correct.
Okay.
So if we do that and we get that approval to do, do we need to put it on the pause and structure this the correct way after that class? Or would just having that MOU in place suffice?
Well, we have to do an MOU every time we do a class.
But it's once a year.
Right.
It, it's not like it's.
It's once a year at that location. That doesn't stop anywhere else from running ARF.
Right.
And that's where the big concern comes in. We can clean up, we can clean up one, one situation, but when it's, if, if Memphis or FedEx or whoever else decides they want to run this, we want to do that. or whoever else decides they want to run this, we want to do that. If the program itself isn't cleaned up and the practical skill is done the way that it's supposed to be done, then we still run the risk of, of being in violation of the policy of doing it the right way.
So I'm going to say, I'm going to make a motion that we get an MOU, we work on this starting tomorrow to get an MOU for this September class, because I don't want to keep them from completing what they've got done. But as soon as that class is in, this is on a pause for six months. And we get everything in place and then we go back like we were. That's, that's my motion. I'll put it in form of motion. You can agree or disagree with me.
I second that.
So restate your motion.
So we're going to get the MOU for this class in September so that they can complete their ARF training and their certification. And then as soon as that class is finished, then it'll go on a pause until the first of the year.
Now, just from a question standpoint, my understanding is that when that class is done, they're basically signing off on a piece of paper saying that it was done and then we're accepting that. Do we need to come up with a process for that person to be able to sign off on those skills?
I would say so, yes. As part of your, as part of that MOU that you're developing. And then that'll just be the start in the process for you to develop that going forward.
Okay.
You know, it's first of the year.
Yes, sir.
So with that, if we need to see, okay, are they meeting the JPRs? Maybe we can use that class as an opportunity to kind of observe that. I mean, you know, and to kind of check them off. Because I think once, you know, you see it, that they're, you're going to see that they're, I would say probably meeting and going above the standard. I mean, it's, it's a, you know.
I've got four that's been to it and it's a great class.
Director Sparks.
So just so everybody's clear, this is a T-PAC program that, that we had approved. And those instructors at Fort Campbell are teaching it under T-PAC's umbrella. And they're using those, the commission skills packet for ARF. And they're doing live fire verification and all of that during that class.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
So that, that would make that side of things easier for you?
It does. I, I need to get, so ARF is currently using an old edition of practical skills. So that will have to get updated before September, which is doable. That's not, I'm just stating that so it's made aware of, but that's good to hear.
Right. Any other discussion? All in favor? Say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing done? You know what you need to do?
Yes, sir.
All right. Next we have...
I just said thank you, Greg.
Next we have Director Sparks with intermediate pump operations we heard during the work session.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion. I have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Ayes, have it. Okay. UT Center for Industrial Services courses, both structural, collapse awareness, operations and technician. We'll take this one at a time.
I make the motion for the structural collapse.
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Ayes, have it. Machinery rescue course awareness, operations and technician.
I'll make a motion that we approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Green.
I'll second.
I have a second by Commissioner Moore. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Ayes, have it. Fire engineering courses, we reviewed in the work session.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Green.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Solomon. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Ayes, have it. Vector solution courses. We reviewed that in the work session as well.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Boatwright.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Moore. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Ayes, have it. Next up is the Tennessee Fire Chiefs Association, Southeastern Association of Fire Chiefs Conference courses.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Commissioner Moore with the motion, seconded by Commissioner Solomon. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Ayes, have it. Okay. Well, I think with the letter J, we went ahead and took care of by moving it to 20 hours into our future rule. And with that, we went ahead and closed it and have it moving forward from this point. But at this point, we're at part of the meeting where we're open for public comments or suggestions based on work that's been performed today. Anyone in the audience that would like to address the commission about any of the things that took place? Now's your opportunity. Anyone online that would like to ask questions or discuss? Going one? Going twice? Hearing done? We close the public comment section. Dates of future meetings.
November 3rd and 4th in Middle Tennessee.
Is that in a form of a motion?
I'll make that in form of a motion.
All right. I have a motion.
Did you check on those dates? Okay.
So it's going to be T-PAC, sir?
Yeah.
Perfect. All right. So motion by Commissioner Green, who seconded?
I did, sir.
Commissioner Henry for November 3rd and 4th. Third, we're leaving open for a possible hearing. Fourth will be a work session with business meeting to follow. 9:00 AM on the 4th, tentative 2 PM on the 3rd. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing done?
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn. And a second by Commissioner Green. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Ayes, have it. Thank you for joining us today for our fire commission meetings. We hope to see you at the next one.